All right, good evening, everyone. It's time for this regular scheduled committee of the whole. We are a day later than usual just because of the election. I just want to start off by acknowledging that we're having this meeting on the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Salish Peoples, specifically the Lakewengans, people known today as the Isqamalt and Songhe's First Nations, and their connections to these lands continue to this day. Also, just point out that this meeting will be livestreamed and archived for future viewing. So if you're coming to the microphone, just be aware of that in your comments. And also, just before we start, I want to just acknowledge, we had a former, longtime staff member, Tom McDonald, that passed away and his funeral was held today. And I just want to acknowledge his many long years of service, a meaningful service to this community as well. We don't normally do things outside of the thing, but I think it's just worth noting because he was such a big part of this staff. The first item on our agenda, actually, I'll just point out as well, this is a committee of the whole meeting. So for those who aren't familiar, while we meet here as a council, we're actually just sitting as a committee. So no decisions are made today, and you'll hear some of the procedural pieces that will make recommendations to council to take certain actions, and those are often held here. So this, by its very nature, is a little less formal than a regular council meeting. So with that, we'll start off with the Parks Recreation and Culture portion, and we have Mr. Herman, Director of Parks Recreation and Culture, and Mr. Holding, the board chair, to introduce this item. Welcome.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just to give you an overview of what took place at the October meeting of the commission, there was a few items of business. There was an update that the commission had asked for on the urban forest strategy and where we were at to date. That report is actually in your package, so I won't go through it in any detailed way, but that was, there was some discussion and a few questions on that. I think I'd mentioned at a previous meeting that there was a coming joint initiative, and I didn't want to steal the manager of Park Services' thunder, so that was what we're now aware of, the Grow the Oak in Oak Bay campaign. So we're very excited and hopeful that that will have the desired effect in the community. Under new business, there was an item, a report for a covered bike shelter at the Windsor Pavilion. The Rotary Club had come forward with a request, as they often do, to the manager of Park Services, asking if there were any projects that they could help to bring to fruition. So this was one that they discussed and brought forward, and possibly of raising funds for, through Sell a Brick sort of program, similar to, I think, what had taken place in the West Shore recently. So the commission did approve that request. There was quite a bit of discussion on other potential initiatives of similar nature, some playground fundraising that could potentially happen, things like that. There is a council maybe where there's a subcommittee of the commission, a Playground Enhancement Subcommittee, and there was discussion around that Subcommittee potentially meeting with the Rotary Club's Community Services Committee to talk further. I believe that's been put on hold pending the results of council's commission and committee review. But, and I should mention that, as much as the commission did approve that project, we're not sure yet whether Rotary wants to go forward. I think they, obviously, they've committed to some significant fundraising for the new Spray Park, once that comes to fruition. So they had to go back and have some discussions. So we haven't heard back yet whether they do want to pursue that, but if they do, the commission has granted approval. There, excuse me, there was another report that's also in the package. Petition had come forward from a number of early morning users of the Oak Bay Rec Center with a request to open at 5:30 morning, in the morning, rather than 6:00. Staff did a fairly thorough analysis of that, of that request, and brought forward the report. I think some of the impacts are noted in the report, but to summarize, if that was to be approved, it would have decreased the amount of time for maintenance staff to get the building clean overnight, and we already have the longest operating hours in the region. Our staff were also concerned about the challenges of getting staff in at that time in the morning. They already sometimes have to twist arms for the 6 o'clock shift, and when we're open at 6:00, staff are there much earlier than that, so 5:30 would be getting pretty early. Also, the impact, if we were to, there's either a financial implication of additional staff time, or if we wanted to do it with no financial implication, it would mean closing early or late at night, which is a different clientele that, I think, is one that, as much as there may not be as busy, it's, I think, part of our mandate to try and ensure that we're providing service to the whole socio-economic spectrum of folks that live in the community, and so I always felt that that was important to consider. And for all of those reasons, the commission, as you will see in the minutes, decided to leave the pool operating hours as they are. And those were the main topics discussed. The rest were just regular monthly reports from staff, but I could certainly answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Are there any questions of Mr. Herman? Let's look for a motion to, I guess we approve, I guess, the, yes, we, I told us to receive them, the minutes.
Move/receive?
Is that correct?
Move/approve.
Sorry. What does our, sorry, I should have it here, but I've just closed up my things. Move/approval, thank you. Moved and seconded?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Actually, I hope I went ahead of myself here a little bit. Normally invite the public to come forward as well. If anybody who wishes to have any questions or comments related to this topic, you're welcome to come forward. Not seeing anybody. I'll bring it back to this table. Oh, Councilor Patterson.
Just a point, Mayor. I'm just reading the explanatory note, which I should have read probably before we started. It does say, if the committee wishes to follow the usual process, we, the park were to approve the request from the Rotary Club of Oak Bay to begin fundraising.
So that would be done separately. So we'll deal with this motion first, and if we want to deal with that motion separately, can do that. Any other discussion on the minutes? Okay, seeing that, all those in favor, opposed and opposed, thank you. And we'd like to make a second part of that motion. Councilor Patterson?
Yes, the Parks Recreation and Culture Commission approved the request from the Rotary Club of Oak Bay to begin fundraising for the Buy a Brick program to cover the material costs of a covered bike shelter at Windsor Park, and that the Playground Subcommittee meet with the Rotary's Community Services Committee to discuss playground modernization issues.
I think we have a slight error in the-
There's a slight change on, there's a slight change on that. The Playground Committee is not going to meet. So I think making the motion without the Playground Committee part in there would be the right way to go.
So we will propose an amendment to end at the bike shelter at Windsor Park.
Second.
Moving seconded. So this is essentially us approving that process to go forward. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed and opposed, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Herman. And I'll let you up and move. We now move on to our land use application section. We have three items here tonight. The first is for architectural siding and design at 640 Beach Drive, and I'll turn to Ms. Jensen, our manager of planning, to give an overview of the application.
Thank you, Chair. This property is located on Beach Drive near Newport Avenue, where the applicant is proposing to construct an approximately 4,000 square foot single-family home on one of the upper lots, which is part of a four-lot strata development. The house design reads as a two-story contemporary home with tongue and groove siding. The advisory design panel considered this to be a well-executed design, where the layering of forms is respectful of the neighborhood context. They did recommend approving the proposed development. There was also some discussion around paving within the front yard and ensuring the use of weather-resistant siding, which the applicant has addressed by proposing the tongue and groove siding and using harrowing bone pavers as an architectural feature. Staff have also reviewed the application. The proposed style incorporates elements of the surrounding area of both heritage and newer homes while presenting as a modern design. The home is at the top of the strata road, sited within a plateau area adjacent to a covenant area for protection of a small Gary Oak Grove. In addition to the existing trees, the applicant is proposing to plant 15 trees, which will exceed the 35% tree canopy target. The landscaping provides privacy screening for the adjacent neighbor and introduces native species such as Gary Oak, Arbutus, and Shore pine onto the site. Staff are now requesting council direction as to the options.
Thank you very much. And is the applicant here? Is there anything? Okay, thank you. I don't know if there'll be questions, but there may be, so be prepared to come forward if there are. The process here is we'll take questions from council, go to the public for any comments or questions, and then come back to this table. Councilor Braithwaite?
Um, yeah, actually, this is a question to staff. On page three of the report, under where it says, the very, the line right before strategic impact, it says, "Staff consider the proposed development, including variances, to be supportable." Is there variances on this?
No, there are no variances.
So it's just, that's just how it's worded? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braithwaite. Any other questions from committee? Councilor Braithwaite?
Yeah. Also, in the arborist report, it said, "Limited soil in this area and the windy environment may stunt the growth of the trees, and they may never reach the size outlined in Appendix Five of the urban forest strategy." So my question would be, if they can't meet, if the arborist doesn't feel that the tree canopy will not reach what is outlined in our bylaw, how do we mitigate against that?
Ms. Jensen?
Thank you, through your chair. Yes, we do recognize that it is a different environment up on this site. It is quite windy, and the protected Gary Oak Grove that's at the rear of the property now are quite small, and they're never going to reach full height because of the climate conditions in that area. So with what the applicant is proposing to plant on the site, if we give them the credits based on the urban forest strategy for the type of tree and the size of the tree, they would actually be at 106% for tree canopy cover, but we would anticipate, because of the climatic conditions, they're likely to hit 38%. So they're still above the tree canopy cover.
Thank you.
Councilor Patterson?
Thank you. And I attended the design panel meeting when this was presented, and the design panel commented on the use of the materials, and of course, I notice in the report now and in the designs, it has been changed. So the design panel really commended the use of kind of the board and batten look that we see on the drawings in the application because of the nod that it gave to both modern architecture and the heritage building in this site. But they did acknowledge that it would be difficult to execute as presented because of climatic elements, particularly the rain here and constructing that, and so that they had a lot of questions about how the design would be modified to accommodate that. And so in here, it does talk about proposing a tight-fit vertical tongue and groove with selective batting, but I don't see that that has been translated onto the drawings. I'm not an architect, so I don't want to comment on that, but I'm just wondering-
Why don't I invite the applicant forward, and if he can answer the question, then do so. And so if you could just state your name and municipality, residence, and company, if you wish.
Marco Simsick, Simsick and Yurik Architects. So we designed the two homes for that site. I mean, basically, the conversation at the ADP was a lot around detailing and the appropriate use of wood, given the climate, but also given the desire for a sort of imparting craft vernacular and thinking about how materials are used. So the way that we approached it really was to, there's not a lot of detail, obviously, shown at the ADP level, so really thinking through any horizontal use of wood that would need to be sloped, and in fact, trying to limit the use of the horizontal wood, so that the battens would, you know, terminate at a flashing level or at a windowsill level, where it's protected with a metal flashing piece, but that over top of windows, for example, rather than terminating at a horizontal piece of wood, that it would just end so that the runoff basically is free to carry on and not get caught up on horizontal members. So that, that and of course, just good design and detailing practice around the tongue and groove, so that limit the ability for rain and moisture to get past that first layer of protection. So, sorry, it's just, it's less maybe evident in a kind of overall design sense, and it really comes down to a lot of the technical detailing and how to address it there.
Thank you. And maybe also, if you could just write your name down, because when we have minutes, we want to make sure we get the right spelling of people's names. And are there any other questions? Councilor Braithwaite?
Um, yes. I noticed that our bylaw says that the floor area ratio can be 40% in lot coverage, can be 30%, and this first house has a floor area ratio of 40 and a lot coverage of 29. So my question would be, you know, what is the, what is the reasoning for building as far as you can to the bylaw, when, in my mind, if someone in the future wants to come and make any adjustment whatsoever, or any addition to that house, they're going to have to look for a variance on that? So I noticed on this house and on the next one is actually even more so to the letter of the bylaw. So was there any consideration to make it just a little bit smaller, so that in the future, you would be able to have an additional patio or deck or something like that?
I think, Councilor Braithwaite, just for clarification, you can't vary the floor-area ratio. It's the maximum that you can build, period. So it limits that. Yes, go ahead.
On the lot covered.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably more a question for the client rep, as far as, I think it speaks more to the market and the performer that they're working to.
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Matthew Voss. I'm the applicant on this file. Exactly to Marco's point, it does come down to really what we want to bring to the market. And yes, although we're maxed out on the .4 or the 40% floor area ratio and the site coverage, it just, to put it into terms, backing out the garage, which is about 600 square feet, and then backing out the deck areas, we ended up being around 3,300 square feet in total of residential area, which we felt was reasonable for this clientele in this area. It really just comes down to a demographic.
So, sorry, when you say backing out the garage, you're taking out, because when I calculated, it was like 40 or 187 square feet.
Yeah, sorry, when I back it out, I'm looking at, because you guys include a portion of that garage, I'm backing out the garage portion, and then also the balcony, which would be included in that floor area, per your bylaws.
And if I just might continue. And then, you know, when I look at the house that's in the front of this property, that one, I think, fits quite well in with the heritage house. And I look at these two, and I don't really see how these two fit aesthetically in with the heritage value of, or the heritage aesthetic of the house, of the main house. So perhaps you can talk to me a little bit about that, because that is kind of holding me back on this. I don't, I don't, I know, we have authority to look at the, something that's in a subdivision that is sensitive and compatible to the heritage building, and for me, right now, I'm not seeing that.
I'm going to just pass a question to you, but just for those in the audience who are wondering, this is in front of us because there was a heritage revitalization agreement as part of a subdivision application. So there is a restored heritage house on this property, and there are three additional lots created. There's been one siding and design approved at the front of the lot, and two at the back, just for clarification. So, thank you.
You know, to some extent, it obviously comes in the realm of subjectivity, sort of how people respond and feel about materials and colors and forms, but maybe just to try to speak to it in terms of intention and how we felt it was fitting in. In our minds, actually, it's interesting, the comparison to Lot 1, I think in our minds, we're actually being more sensitive to the context, so it's interesting that your impression is that it's less so. I mean, my read of aspects of Lot 1 is that there's a large portion of it that is very much in a kind of almost hyper-modern mode, where it's roof-to-floor and wall-to-wall glass, almost like a curtain wall system, which feels, to my mind, kind of more alien. I think that we're trying to have the vast majority of the glazing feel like punched openings, so that that lends itself to a more kind of traditional read, where you have sort of solid wall and then punched openings, where you have windows. I think maybe more importantly, we're sort of kind of trying to think about these homes as bridging, in a way, definitely not trying to replicate or mimic heritage architecture, but really have it stand on its own and preserve value of something that's truly old, which, you know, what we have there is a really beautiful example of a kind of Georgian revival, and I think really well-preserved and well-designed in, you know, 1920s. The houses that we designed, we felt, we wanted them to be fairly subdued, and I think the mechanism by which we do that is to keep the forms fairly simple. There's nothing sort of overly expressive. We don't have like flying roof forms, or, and then materially, not having a lot of color, a lot of expressive materials that call out a lot of attention. So our approach was really that the whole house is painted in a kind of monochromatic way, and that the board and batten give it some degree of visual interest in the way that it catches light and casts shadows, sort of patterning with light and shadow, but really keeping the palette actually quite simple and subdued was really our approach.
Councilor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This may be even more for staff and for the applicant, but also at the design panel, there was discussion around the slope to get access to this, the rise that these homes were on, and in fact, that it would prove difficult for walkability. So in other words, you really have to drive up, and I think that there was even reference to having to have it serviced for refuse pickup independently, because the trucks couldn't get up and around. So that brings the same question to service of emergency vehicles and the water runoff with the surfings that's on the road. So I don't know how much that's been investigated by staff, but I'm just wondering if any work has been done.
Now, this is a siding and design discussion, so I don't want to go too far down this path. I know that staff deal with these things in a thing, but it may be of general interest to the public, so if Ms. Jensen can answer.
Yeah, just to confirm, all of those items are dealt with through the subdivision process. Any subdivision application we receive is referred out to the various departments to ensure that we are meeting all the requirements of the district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Green?
Questions only at this point?
Yeah, just questions at this point. I'm just going to ask a question. It's really a follow, it's a, you've answered primarily the pieces, but I looked at this, and I had the same questions about context of the heritage building, and really that this being a heritage revitalization area subdivision, how do those buildings fit? I really do appreciate your answers in the way that you've attached to it. It's thoughtful. The only aspect of that that's not there is a little bit is the scaling, and sometimes just by your sheer eye, you get drawn to the largest object in there, and they're quite, I think, you articulated well the articulation of the buildings and ways of keeping that down, but I am still concerned, you know, when I first read this, I thought they seemed out of proportion to me for that. Just the reality is, I appreciate that there's a pro forma, and there's a rights of the zoning attachment, but there's also, in the context of this heritage building, so if you don't mind just addressing the massing itself and how that fits, because I think we want to make sure that the primary building of this HRA is not drowned within the form and the massing of the buildings that are being, and we'll just lump them both together in this case, because the two of them sit-
Yeah, absolutely. You know, it's a fair question, it's a good question. They do, for better or worse, the two homes sit on the highest point of land in that development, including most of the surrounding neighbors. So I think, to some extent, regardless of their particular massing, they will feel somewhat looming over the context, just by virtue of the elevated ground plane that they sit on. So I think it maybe makes me want to go back to the same point, to some extent, which is the importance that we put on neutrality, in a sense, that, you know, keeping the color uniform across the verticality of the board and batten, giving this kind of vertical line with the shadowing, almost tree-like in form, that it's sort of, just trying to provide a fairly calm visual backdrop. There's not, like, you know, if one imagines maybe a more traditional west coast contemporary approach, that would be lots of stone, lots of orange cedar, which would be very visually expressive and quite visually busy, I would say, in comparison. And in fact, if you kind of compare, and we did, in fact, did a render that sort of superimposed 644 Beach, the heritage home, with the new ones in the backdrop, and by comparison, 644 does have more articulation to its form, has more detail in the way that the window patterning, the window framing, so that was the lens through which we're looking at it, is that it's really, we have a little less control over the massing of it, because that does tie into client goals, but really, from an architectural standpoint, trying to have it basically be less dominant, less expressive, and trying to be a little bit more of a background form to 644.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions of the applicant at this time? I'm seeing any. Thank you. I'm going to invite the public, if anybody wishes to come forward to speak, I'll do that at this time. If anybody does wish to come forward to address council on this application, again, this is specifically to 640 Beach Drive, which is the northwest lot of this thing we're going to do with 642 next. You're welcome to do so. Is there anybody from the audience who wishes to speak? I'm not seeing any, so in that case, I'll bring it back to this table, and this is the point, if there's for a committee to consider, next steps. Councilor Green, do you want to make a comment?
I should probably weigh in, given that I'm the council liaison to the advisory design panel. I too was at that meeting. I have had comments similar to my colleagues about the fact that the new-
I have had comments similar to my colleagues about the fact that the new homes are not necessarily compatible visually with the large home on the, on the hill. But I'm also reminded that one of the principles around heritage revitalization and heritage building is that often the new structures are not meant to mimic or replicate the original, the, the, the original heritage home. So if you, if you know this area well, and I happen to walk by there quite often, um, you have Inglewood Terrace that comes down the hill onto Beach Drive, then you have this property with the various lots. And I have to say that these new homes actually are consistent architecturally with the houses around them, both up, all the way up Inglewood, and then on the other side. So I think in, in terms of context, they, 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 they don't, they aren't harsh, they don't leap out at you. And I think to the point, uh, around simplicity, they als- they are simple in design, in, in essence, they fit, they don't overtake the visual of the heritage home itself at the top of the hill. It is a very steep property, but I noticed that most of the properties on that, along the, um, that, that side of Beach Drive, between McNeil Bay and the golf course on that side, are all very steep properties. They're either built on rock, or you have to drive up to a rocky outcropping. So it's, they're all gathered around, um, the, the bottom of Anderson Hill. So I am, I will be supporting the recommendation from, um, from the staff on this particular one. And the ADP was very concerned about the quality of product that was going to be used in, in the building of the homes, and one of the remarks that they made, that they were, they were very happy to see the high quality of, uh, materials and product.
Move the recommendation?
Thank you, I was just gonna look for a motion to speak to you. So it's moved, seconded?
Second?
Moved and seconded. Uh, any other discussion? Counselor Braithwaite?
Um, thank you, I appreciate some of the comments from, from Counselor Green. I unfortunately don't feel that way. Um, I think that when I look at this property, I, I, my eye is drawn to the heritage house, and so I again go back to, um, our job is to ensure that, um, we look at, it, look at the other houses, uh, that are being proposed, um, in conjunction with that heritage house, and how it has to be sensitive and comparative, uh, com- um, compatible to that heritage building. I think that the massing on these two houses is too much, um, for this particular, um, for those particular lots. I think the monochromatic, I, I understand that some people like the monochromatic, I find that it makes them stick out even more. Um, and so the materials, I think, that are being used perhaps aren't conducive to me to making it fit into the, to that, um, to that area. Um, I think that the massing, we, you, it could have been a, a, a single-story house, and it would have fit in a lot better, I think, um, even in this similar design, uh, because you, you wouldn't be overwhelmed by that, that second story on, on both of those, um, houses. So for me, um, although again, I do appreciate the comments that you have made, and, and looking at the surrounding area, I think for this particular lot, though, that I would have to vote against, um, the, the staff proposal. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I don't see any. I'll finish with my comments on this. I, I, I've, I've, I sort of feel halfway between the two speakers. Uh, I think that, though however, um, from an architectural sighting and design perspective, it is, uh, I think it meets the standard of requirement on this one. I, I, it does raise to my mind, however, on these heritage revitalization agreements, that perhaps where we're considering things like massing around it, that we might consider that as part of our, our process to ensure that perhaps there's a, perhaps a smaller allowance of massing allowed, uh, in, in key areas, if that's, if that's a desire of counsel, because I think that is the place to deal with that, uh, and not necessarily at the, at sort of the, the judgmental stage that, that we're at right now, of judging whether the, the result is adequate. So, uh, with that, no other comments? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Braithwaite opposed? Thank you very much. So next steps of this one are that it will go to, the recommendation from this body will go to counsel at the next council meeting, that's October twenty-eighth next week, uh, for final approval, but generally we tend to approve what we recommend approving to ourselves at that stage. Uh, we have second, next item number three, which is six-four-two Beach Drive. I don't think we need the applicant to come forward on that one, uh, at this point. I imagine most of the questions have been answered, unless there's anything specific to this piece of property. This is the, now these, uh, northeast, uh, lot on the, on the property, uh, similar design, similar specs. Any questions of counsel? I'm not seeing any. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to come forward to speak this application? I'm not seeing any, so I'll come back to this table. Uh, any discussion from counsel, actually, maybe just a motion to speak to someone wishes to make?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Same arguments, all stand, okay? I'll call the question. Oh, Counselor Nay?
I'm just gonna say is, uh, um, just, eh, to respond to the two houses on this, uh, property that we've, you know, have zoned it with an HRA agreement, but I, I mean, I, eh, it is subjective, as the applicant has brought to our attention, so, um, I, you know, we don't need to get into that. Eh, I, I'm not gonna get into that at that table, but I, what I want to say is that, uh, I, I appreciate the comments that, uh, the applicant has brought to our attention to help us understand, um, the particulars and the, the nature of the design, and I actually find, uh, what you're saying, uh, compelling, and to my eye, I, I, I think they're actually gonna fit very, they're very complimentary to the heritage, uh, uh, dwelling, for all the reasons that you've described in your description. So I, I appreciate really, uh, the quality, the architectural quality, um, and the complementarity to the heritage house and the context of the adjacent property. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Nay. Any other comments? Counselor, oh, Counselor Appleton and Counselor Green?
Uh, thank you, worship. I, I just echoing, uh, Counselor Nay's comments, I did, did just want to pick up on one specific comment that the applicant made that I thought was important, and in as much as what's said here isn't necessarily going to directly inform what other people will bring forward, I, I just wanted to make a point that I appreciated the comment that was made about transitional forms, where there's an existing heritage building, and recognizing that there are some fairly modern buildings, uh, as well in Oak Bay. Uh, I, I find that the, the argument for producing a, uh, especially in this particular subdivision with this location, uh, the argument for producing a, a transitional form that helps kind of draw the eye from the, uh, the heritage building and up into, uh, some of the newer buildings in the community is, is a significant one. So in as much as everything is done on its own merits, I think that's an important consideration for these types of situations.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton, Counselor Green, you had one? Okay. Any other dis- comments, discussion? No? I'll call, oh, Counselor Patterson?
I just, just to add to some of the discussions around the table, and I do appreciate Counselor Braithwaite's, uh, comments also, um, but the heritage, at the, at the design panel, there was a very thorough, um, review, and particularly a focus on the quality of the, the intended materials and the suitability of it. Um, and while I also appreciate the, um, the massing comments, and I think that that particularly, um, is of some concern to me on, on sharply sloping elevations, because, um, with climate change, those impacts may be known, but I still fall to the, uh, the discussions, the very, very thorough and knowledgeable discussions at the ADP. And so I, um, I take those, those comments into, into consideration, and so I support it.
Seeing any, no further discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very mu- no, oh, Counselor Braithwaite opposed? Uh, and just again, the same process, uh, we'll follow for this one as the previous one, it'll go to the council for final consideration on, on next Monday. So thank you for that. We have one more, uh, land use, another, uh, sighting and design. This is for the Uplands. Uh, is the applicant here for this building? I think there is. Is the applicant here for the, uh, three-four-seven zero Upper Terrace? You don't have to come, you, come forward, there probably will be some questions. And I'll just, uh, hand this over to Ms. Jensen to introduce.
Thank you. Uh, this application is for Upland sighting and design approval to construct a new eleven-thousand four hundred square foot single-family home and accessory building. The new home is proposed along the west side of Upper Terrace Road, with the accessory building located in the rear yard, and which would house a twenty-five meter in-ground swimming pool. Construction results in the removal of three trees for the home, and an additional three to four trees for the accessory building. The application was considered by the advisory design panel at their July meeting. The panel was generally supportive of the home design, noting it was authentic and well-executed. However, they also indicated that the design style is very symmetrical and does not necessarily respond to the site's landscape and surrounding context. There was also concern respecting the impact of the accessory building and the tree removal required to accommodate that accessory building. As such, the design panel recommended denying the application. Subsequent to meeting with the panel, the applicant made some modifications to the proposed design, uh, by bringing the accessory building forward approximately four feet. This still impacts tree removal on the site, but does reduce the likelihood of impacting the neighboring trees, uh, to the west, so on the adjacent property. Staff have also reviewed the application with respect to zoning guidelines and the urban forest strategy. The proposal does not appear to be consistent with the guidelines, specifically with respect to maintaining the park-like setting and retention of trees. We also note that, given the tree removal, the applicant proposes to plant six Gary Oak trees in their place, exceeding the forty-five percent tree canopy cover. Staff are seeking counsel direction.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Jensen, and I'll just do a quick introduction for those in the audience wondering. Uh, within Uplands, we do, uh, all applications have to come to council, uh, for sighting and design approval. Uh, so similar process as the previous one, but this is, uh, true for all applications, not just subdivision or HRAs in the Uplands area. So a strange quirk left over, uh, from previous years, that, that requires us to come to council. So with that, uh, are there any questions of council, of the applicant? Counselor Braithwaite? Or of staff?
Um, yeah, actually, this is for the applicant. I'm, I'm wondering, um, when you didn't have approval from ADP or staff, why would you bring this forward to council? Were you, I mean, would, did you not take into consideration the, the comments from ADP or, or staff, or, I'm just wondering what the logic was behind that?
All right, well, it's gonna take me a few minutes to, uh, explain that, and, uh...
Please do. And, and if I just ask, we're asking the questions, let's ask them sort of through the chair in a way that just so there's not, the tone can get confrontational, otherwise I don't want that to be the case. I just want there's to be, uh, so thank you, and if you just do the same thing, introduce your name and, and...
My name's John Alexander. I'm the solicitor for the, uh, owners on the property here, and, uh, Bianca Bodley is with me. She is, uh, the landscape professional who, uh, can address the tree issues, which, uh, as far as I can tell from all of the staff reporting, the only real issue here is trees, it's not the design or the sighting of the buildings themselves, it's the trees. I, I do have a concern, and I have expressed the concern to the, uh, advisory design panel and to staff before we went in front of them in July with respect to what it was they were looking at, because trees were the focus from the beginning. I do have a concern, because while the advisory design panel recommended rejection, they did so, giving a list of items that if addressed, would result in acceptance. I do have a concern, because the process that we then adopted was to make those changes as requested by the design panel, and ask the design panel to provide you with their further advice, which is their job, they're an advisory panel. Staff did not cause that to happen. We were in front of the design panel in July, and that in itself took many months to get there. And after staff would not send it back to the design panel, we were really left with proceeding in some fashion to get an answer. And even tonight, I understand, it's a committee recommendation, and that won't happen until the next council meeting, but I want to run through for you what the concern is, and why I say this recommendation is most unhelpful that's in front of you tonight, and leads us down entirely the wrong path. So...
If we can just focus on the, on the issues addressed and how, or raised and how they've been addressed, that's probably the, the simplest way of, of getting through those.
Sorry, what would you like to be?
Oh, if you could, you said there's the issues that, we have your letter as well in our correspondence, but if you wish to, we go through your, the issues that were raised and how you've addressed them, that would be helpful for this body.
So, as you pointed out when you started, the Uplands is a special case because of the nineteen thirty-five statute that allows council, by bylaw, to provide for regulation and approving of the site and architectural design of buildings in the Uplands. Council's taken that, used that power, and they have enacted a bylaw to do that. So the bylaw provides one and only one guideline. It's very important to understand, the Uplands is not a development permit area. There are no development permit guidelines in your official community plan that relate to the Uplands. So when staff refers you to the Uplands design guidelines, they are in fact not guidelines at all. You will find them in your official community plan under housing policies. They are policies. The old nineteen thirty-five statute says that you can enact a bylaw to provide for regulations approving citing and architectural design. It's that bylaw where you would, if you wanted to have a number of guidelines, put the guidelines. Oak Bay Council has never done that. They've amended that bylaw many times since it was first enacted, as late as two thousand and seven. That's bylaw thirty-five forty-five. There's one guideline in it, and what it says is nothing is to be designed the same or similar or resembling existing houses within five hundred feet. For whatever reason, that is the only guideline that you have by bylaw applied to the Uplands in terms of a design guideline. Now, there's no issue with respect to that. This French chateau style of home does not clearly appear anywhere within five hundred feet. Staff haven't even addressed that, but we all know that that's, that, that is the case. The design itself, to the extent it was considered by the ADP, and Counselor Green, I believe you were there in July when it was considered, um, was accepted by the design panel. They thought it was well-executed, um, a very good example of the genre, et cetera, et cetera, and staff's report seems to indicate that, the ADP minutes indicate that, and in the result. That's why you're not hearing from an architect tonight, because there don't appear to be any design issues with this building. It may not be what everybody likes, but it certainly meets the one lawful guideline that you can apply. And even if you were to treat the housing policies as guidelines, it meets those guidelines. It's a big home, but it does not maximize the site coverage. It's, um, it's five, um, five points below, I think that it's a thirty percent site coverage, and this one's at twenty-five, so it's left room for expansion. The real issue is the accessory building. Accessory building is behind the main building, and it's symmetrical like the main building, and sits at the back of the backyard. It meets all zoning requirements. It does pretty well maximize the, the, the size of an allowed accessory building. And that's, those are both permitted uses. As you said earlier, when, I think, Counselor Braithwaite, uh, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned, Counselor Braithwaite raised the issue of, why did you maximize your site coverage so that someone in the future can't make a change without a variance? You made the point, well, you can't vary that anyway, and that's correct. You can't use a development permit or a development variance permit to vary use or density. And density is controlled in these residential areas by site coverage and floor space ratio. So you can't change those with a development permit, that's entirely correct. But what that means also is, you can't refuse to give a development permit because you think a building's too big, as long as it meets those zoning requirements. And this building does meet the zoning requirements, as does the accessory building. So why are we seeing a, a rejection, and why am I here despite the rejection? It's all about the trees. If you read carefully the staff report, you'll see, there's nothing really about rejection until you get to page five of six. In the let, basically the last big paragraph, the architectural finishes and details are consistent with the Upland design guidelines. However, the potential removal of seven Gary Oak trees and possible impacts to four Gary Oak trees is not consistent with the official community plan guidelines for development in the Uplands. Well, as I said, they're not design guidelines, they're housing policies, broad statements of principle, and not ones that you, in, in this process, have any ability to enforce with the greatest of respect. But still, it's all about the trees. Other thing that needs to be absolutely emphasized is with respect to trees and building, your tree bylaw ad- tree bylaw addresses that. That's where it's addressed. The tree bylaw says clearly and unequivocally that trees in a building envelope of a principal or an accessory building can be removed. As long as you have a building permit, they can be removed. So where does that leave this applicant? He has an entitlement to build a home and an accessory building up to the permitted density size, and he's not exceeding that. And that means trees must be removed. There's nothing you can do about that. And the tree bylaw says that is legal. And there's nothing that counsel can do about that unless they want to amend the bylaw to say you can't remove trees in building envelopes. Well, I don't think your citizens would go along with that. But we're not there. You're not here to talk about amending the bylaw. The fact is, if you have an absolute right to remove the trees, and the only complaint that has come through this long process with these, the design panel, and then through staff several times, is about the trees, what do we do about that? I say, staff hasn't given you anything to help you with that. How do you solve this problem? If you, and Ms. Bodley can address this, the design iterations have all been done to minimize the number of trees that are impacted. The building was moved at the request of the design panel to minimize the impact on trees. The buildings were shifted around and several studies were done with the arborists' involvement to see if there's any other way where we get out of root zones, out of drip zones, away from property lines where there are trees on adjacent properties, to try to come down to the minimum, building what the owner's entitled to build. And this is the plan that results. So the architects don't have a further solution. Ms. Bodley and her landscape design people don't have a further solution. And staff have left you with this recommendation that just says, while the changes following the July ADP meeting do reduce the impact on neighboring trees, staff still have concerns relative to the anticipated removal of four Gary Oak trees to accommodate the sighting and design of the accessory building. It's not to accommodate the sighting and design of the building, it's to accommodate the building. The only solution is for you to say, we don't approve your accessory building. You can't build your accessory building. And so why am I here tonight? We need to come to the end of this. If that's what counsel is going to say, we will not approve this because putting an accessory building on this property impacts too many trees, then say so. I can get instructions from my client as to how he responds to that. That's not where we want to go. And I have given him the opinion that you don't have the authority to do that. So we have gone through this iteration, there's nothing more for the architects and the design panel to weigh in on. Let me remind you, only two members of your design panel oppose this, only two. There's nothing left for them to weigh in on. We simply have to make a decision. Do the Oak Bay bylaws, the tree bylaw, and the Uplands design bylaw permit this accessory building, or don't they? It's a yes or no question. Now, as I say, Ms. Bodley is here to, to answer any questions about, well, is there something else we can do and still have this accessory building, which is at its maximum size? The main building is not. If you have the, if you want those specs...
We have them, sir.
They're, they're on, they're on the plan. I think it's lot coverage, principal building, twenty-five is allowed and proposed is nineteen point four-seven. The accessory building is five percent, and it is at four point nine-eight, so it's maxed out. But the purpose of that building, it will not fulfill its function without it being that size. So I hope that, I'm sorry it took a long time, and you have my letters, and a lot of this is set out in my letters, but Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor Braithwaite, that's why I'm here, despite the fact that staff have left you just saying, refuse it. Because that leaves us all with nothing, we have to go somewhere. The law is very clear that if you are going to refuse this kind of an application, a development permit or an approval, you must indicate what has to be done to gain approval. You can't just say no and come back and try to pin the tail on the...
Point of order, Your Worship?
Yes, Counselor Alexander.
I'd just like to point out that despite what's being stated here, the recommendation from staff is not exclusively to deny or to approve, there's several recommendations in the staff report.
Thank you. I think we've covered the fact that your opinion is that we don't have a certain rights...
I just read the one line under recommendation, but maybe there was an amended report that I didn't see.
I think, I think we can just draw this to a, to a conclusion anyway. I think the primary point being raised that counsel doesn't have, nothing counsel can do about this if, unless we meet something to do with your definition of sitting and design, so we'll, we'll capture that. Is there anything else that you wish to add before we go to questions from, further questions from counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Are there any other questions of counsel? Counselor Braithwaite, you were, you had the microphone.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little bit confused because when I'm looking at the bylaw, and I'll read from the bylaw, it says, "No building and no addition or exterior alteration thereof shall be erected, constructed, reconstructed, placed, or maintained on any lot, and no building permit shall be issued unless and until the proposal to erect or make the same and architectural plans, including a sighting plan, elevations and specifications thereof, have first been submitted to and approved as to citing and architectural design by counsel, and such a building, addition or exterior alteration shall be constructed only in accordance with such approval plan or plans." So through you, Mayor, I'm wondering, and perhaps to staff, does that not basically say that we do have the authority to dictate citing and design?
Oh, Ms. Jensen or Mr. Anderson? Mr. Anderson?
Yes, certainly the, the bylaw does give counsel the ability to approve plans that are received as to citing and architectural design, that's clear in the bylaw. That is counsel's prerogative.
Thank you. Counselor Braithwaite, anything else? Counselor Green?
Yes, through you, Mayor, to Mr. Alexander or to the proponent. Have you consulted with neighbors either side of the property about your plans? So I consider a best practice as neighborhood consultation, and I think I've spoken to some of the neighbors actually nearby, and it's a very tight community on that part of Upper Terrace. They are very social with one another, they look out for one another, they care about one another, and yet I, my understanding is that they have never met nor received any kind of approach from the proponent as to their plans for the property. So there has apparently been no consultation with neighbors either side of the property. There may have been a consultation, I think, behind perhaps, but the neighbors are concerned about the footprint, actually, and very concerned about tree loss, concerned about the proposal for new trees. So I just wondered, have you had an opportunity to meet with any of those neighbors that are concerned?
So my understanding is that...
Sir, Mr. Alexander, yeah, go ahead.
That SITTA construction has been managing the construction for the...
SITTA?
For the owners, and that they have spoken to the neighbors, and they've had specific interaction, which I provided you with, to the, the trees that were identified as being potentially impacted, and they've worked to, to change that. One, so that's the, the rear, then that leaves the two sides. One of the two sides neighbors were, was here in July in the, at the ADP and listened to it and spoke to SITTA and to me and to the architects afterwards, and expressed his, his lack of concern, given what he saw with the changes in the, I think it was a hedge that was going to be modified. And we, we did see, when the agenda was published on Thursday, for the first time, the email from another neighbor whose concern is too many trees. They don't want the oak trees next to their property. So, and, and Ms. Bodley can address that, that might have been a misreading of the plans by, by that neighbor.
Your Worship, I think some of the neighbors are here this evening and will be speaking later to the application, so perhaps they can clarify their position. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. And to be clear, there's no legal obligation or anything to consult with neighbors on any single-family home developments, just to make that clear. So Counselor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As I look at the plan and, and understanding that particularly with the recognition of Uplands as a national historic site, recognized for it being a famous piece of pioneer urban design with an emphasis on residential landscape, and the proposal here to remove so much of the vegetation, and it appears from the plans that I'm looking at that the, the sighting of the buildings on the lot, in fact, forces the vegetation all to the very perimeters of the site. And that affects the planting certainly on this lot, and I'm not sure how that speaks to the emphasis on the retaining a park-like atmosphere. But I'm also, that whole area is well-treed and changes to the existing canopy and replacements, particularly with an emphasis on them being around the perimeter of the property. It, it almost appears in the drawing like the, the proposed plantings are taking advantage of the neighboring properties to accommodate their growth. So it, it's not just these trees that are being planted, but it is also the impact of trees on the other properties, and this, that's not specifically addressed, so I'm wondering if we could have comments on that.
Yeah, I think I'll drag that, we have the landscape architect here to talk to that, because it was Reese's part of, one of the letters as well.
Yeah, I have the letter here. Through the mayor, my name is Bianca Bodley from Bi Affilia Design Collective, and I'll be able to speak to that comment. So initially, the replacement trees were to be located around the, the base of the existing Gary Oak trees, as sort of a symbiotic, replacing the smaller Gary Oaks under the larger Gary Oaks. It is actually very densely planted as it is in those areas, and we're just creating a more dense landscape in the rear property underneath those existing Gary Oaks, and we're, we're truly adding a significant amount of plant material and trees outside of the designated replacement trees. In, in one of the initial iterations, we had the majority of those, of those replacement trees in the rear, and since receiving that feedback from staff and also speaking with the municipal arborists, we've relocated those replacement trees, majority of them being in the front. We've been, we've had permission to put some of the replacements on the boulevard themselves, but we've managed to include them all in, in the front drive area, and a few on either side of that drive area, and a couple of in, in the back as well. So I think we've addressed that initial concern that we were centering them on the, on the property line. We also had indication from the municipal arborists that they would like us to put the replacement trees in areas where they'd get adequate sunlight, so rather than having them in the understory of the existing Gary Oaks, we put them in a sunnier location, and we were somewhat limited as to where that could be, but we found the most daylight being on the boulevard area, so we followed that instruction and made that revision. So hopefully that addresses that neighbor's concern.
I think if you look at page sixteen of eighteen of the, of the, of the plans...
L three.
We have those plans in front of us.
Yeah, L three and L four. It, you'll see in, in the bubbles on L four, those, those moves that we did towards the end of our application.
But, but L three really demonstrates that aside from what are really the roofs of the building, on the accessory building and the principal building, there's a tiny, tiny amount of backyard that's not tree-covered, and the rest, the entire rest of the property that's not building is tree.
We're at fifty-one point two percent tree canopy coverage with the existing design.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bodley. Are there other questions of the applicant at this time? Counselor Green?
Through you, Mayor. Ms. Bodley, could you confirm how many trees will be either impacted or potentially impacted? Thank you.
I, I need to refer to the largest set of plans that I have back there. I don't have the total. I can give you the total replacement trees, but I don't have the, the summary of the, of the trees to be removed. Oh, I, I do, I'm sorry, my mistake. We have eleven to be removed and fourteen to be replaced as the, as the replacement tree for those that are considered protected, and then a huge number of additional trees, which I can just, I can get that for you in just a moment. If you, if you'll just give me one second.
Thank you, Ms. Bodley.
Screen's too small.
of them being the specific replacement trees. So not replacement trees, but trees as part of the general landscaping, and we also have in excess of sixty shrubs which are considered trees when they grow to maturity, but if you're considering a tree form versus a shrub which has tree size, we're, we're well, well in excess of sixty of those kinds of shrubs which get tree form.
I, I appreciate that, but I haven't quite got an answer to my question. I guess maybe I wasn't clear. How many of the existing mature oak trees will be impacted by the building both front and back, either directly or potentially? Thank you.
Sure.
Is that a question that staff can answer easily, or maybe...
Yeah. With, through the mayor, the, the revised plan indicates that eleven Gary Oak trees will potentially be removed.
Or, or impacted.
Or impacted, yeah. So that's not a for sure that they will be removed. Six will be removed, but eleven in total will be impacted potentially.
And impacted means removed?
No, six, six are to be removed because the structures themselves are taking the place of the trees, but the impact is something that you have to determine towards the end of the project, once we do everything that you can to protect the root zones, but they have the potential of being impacted, eleven in total.
I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Are there any other questions of the applicant at this time? Not seeing any, so we may have to call you back up here again depending on, on future. But at this time, we go to the public, if there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak to the application, you're welcome to come forward at this time. Welcome, sir. Again, if you could just state your name and municipality residence, and then write down your name as well, so we have the correct spelling, that would be helpful.
My name is Bruce Bell. My wife and I live at thirty-four eighty Upper Terrace Road. Our property butts the northern boundary of thirty-four seventy. Seven mature Gary Oaks will be removed, and four more may be impacted by this proposal. To compensate for the removal of these trees, new young Gary Oaks and other protected trees would be planted along the north and south boundaries of thirty-four seventy. Because these trees are protected, neither we nor the neighbors on the southern boundary of thirty-four seventy, the Kamlody's, will be able to trim or cut the branches that grow over our properties. The shade from these new trees will hinder the growth and health of our trees, gardens, and lawns. We will have to rake their leaves and acorns. Any future development we may want to carry out near these boundaries will require us, at our cost, to have assessments made on the impact of these trees. We have ten Gary Oaks in our backyard and three more in front. We like the Gary Oaks, but do not want any more protected trees affecting our property. The Kamlody's are in a similar situation. Please don't solve our neighbors' problems at our expense. It isn't fair. We agree with the comments of Deborah Jensen in her report to the committee that the potential removal of the seven mature Gary Oaks and possible impacts to four others is not consistent with the official community plan guidelines for development in the Uplands. The gross floor area of our house, based on the size of the gross floor area of all buildings, including garages, is four thousand four hundred and seventy-four square feet. The total square footage of our property is twenty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine square feet. The floor area ratio of our house is eighteen percent. I have calculated the floor area ratio by dividing the gross floor area by the square footage of the property. The gross floor area of the Kamlody's house is four thousand six hundred and twenty-four square feet. square feet. Total square footage of their property is twenty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-six square feet. Floor area ratio of their property is seventeen point seven percent. The gross floor area of the Danzo's house at thirty-four seventy-five Upper Terrace, directly across the street from thirty-four seventy, is six thousand square feet. The square footage of their property is forty-seven thousand ninety-six square feet. The floor area ratio of their property is twelve point seven percent. The gross floor area of the proposal is twelve thousand six hundred and eighteen point six square feet. This may not include the size of the garage, I'm not sure, I couldn't tell from the drawings. The square footage of the property is twenty-three thousand seven hundred and forty square feet. The floor area ratio of the property is fifty-one, fifty-three point one percent, almost three times the floor area ratios of its immediate neighbors. We agree with the assessment of the advisory design panel that the proposal is too big for the site, and we agree with its denial of the application for approval. The proposal is not in compliance with the guidelines for development in the Uplands. It does not cite the new development as much as possible within the existing development footprint, retaining as many mature trees and existing vegetation as possible, with massing comparable in scale and massing with other buildings on the street. The proposal does not design the landscape to reflect the character of the neighborhood, including Gary oaks and other large trees, and doesn't maintain the residential park setting. The posed house does not fit into the neighborhood. It is not enough to comply with the bylaws. The proposal must also comply with the design guidelines for development in the Uplands. We ask that this application be denied. We note that if the floor area ratios of the proposal were to be reduced to a percentage comparable to the floor area ratios of the adjoining neighbors and the neighbor directly across the street, none of the Gary oaks on thirty-four seventy are in abutting properties would have to be removed or impacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Welcome, if you could just, also just state your name and municipality for the record, and just write down your name, so we have the correct spelling.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. My name is Nicola Commoti, and my husband and I live at thirty-four sixty Upper Terrace Road. Our house is next door and immediately to the south of the proposed redevelopment. As stated in my letter to you last week, I am concerned that the proposed development does not follow the design guidelines as set out in the official community plan for the District of Oak Bay. Page eighty-two of the OCP states that, quote, "New development should be cited, retaining as many mature trees as possible," end quote. In this case, six Gary oaks are slated for, for removal. A further requirement is that new development has, quote, "Massing comparable in scale and massing with other buildings on the street," end quote. It is clear from the data that Bruce just shared with you that the lot coverage of the subject house is not at all comparable with that of the houses either side of it and across the street. I have some additional comments I would like to bring forward. Uplands, as we know, is situated in native Gary oak meadowland. Victoria is the only major city in, in Canada, and one of the few in North America which has significant patches of its native flora existing within the city core. In B.C., Gary oaks now occupy less than three percent of their original area. We are fortunate to be immersed in this unique ecosystem, and we must preserve it. I have an honest degree in botany, and like many of you, I'm cognizant of the tremendous value that these trees provide. As we all wrestle with the effects of climate change, it is vital that Gary oaks are preserved. Removing six mature Gary oaks so that a house and accessory building can be built is contrary to the OCP guidelines. The plans indicate that these trees will be replaced, but they will take many decades to get to the same size as those lost. In our garden, we have one of the best-preserved Gary oak trees in Oak Bay, according to the municipal arborist. It has a five-foot diameter, and it is a truly magnificent specimen. It was actually one of the reasons we chose to buy the house. The current plan for the redevelopment of thirty-four seventy calls for Gary oaks to be planted close to the Bells and our property lines. This places an onus on both neighbors for ongoing maintenance and, further, disrupts our existing landscaping, including the integrity of our driveway. One of the proposed Gary oaks is to be planted very close, within one foot, of the sewer right of way, which has serious long-term implications for the survival of that tree. My final concern is in regards to community and neighborliness. We are considered to be great neighbors. We've hosted several wine and cheese parties for people on our block, and we've formed close relationships with many of them. We moved here thirteen years ago, not knowing anyone, and enjoyed these gatherings as a great way of facilitating neighbors, getting to know neighbors. Yet, here I stand, unfortunately, placed in an adversarial position with neighbors who I haven't yet met. It disappoints me to be placed in this unfortunate position. Perhaps an early consultation by the applicant with us and with the Bells could have alleviated this situation. Respectfully submitted, Nicola Commoti.
Thank you, Ms. Commoti. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to come forward and speak to this application? Welcome. Good evening. Same process, if you can just give your name and municipality.
My name is Jane Danzo, and my husband and I live at three four seven five Upper Terrace Road, directly across from the subject property. We've lived there for forty years. Our home, which was built in nineteen fourteen, has undergone two major renovations since we purchased it in seventy-nine. Each time, we strove to produce a result that would respect our surroundings because we valued the nature of our immediate neighborhood and the special character of the Uplands. While we appreciate that the proposal for three four seventy Upper Terrace Road is consistent with Oak Bay bylaws, it does not satisfy the guidelines that distinguish the Uplands from other urban developments and that make it special, namely, the maintenance of the residential park setting, the relationship in character and massing to the image of the area, and general massing proportion and overall articulation of building in relation to established housing. Those are direct quotes from the design panel brochure. Notwithstanding the proposed landscaping, which is quite extensive and very interesting, it would be difficult to accept that this project could comply with the guideline of maintaining a residential park-like setting. Furthermore, I'm not going to repeat some of the, the numbers that you have been given by, by Bruce. I wasn't sure what was in the address of my, my fellow neighbors. But I will say that in addition to feeling that the, the massing is too high, a review of the photographs of adjacent and neighboring houses included in the attachments provided by staff reveals that the proposed development fails to be sensitive to existing dwellings and landscape features, a declared ADP goal. Finally, this year, the Uplands was declared a national historic site. According to the author of the successful application for this designation, quote, "When we crafted the application to the Historic Sites and Monuments Board of Canada, we included the park laid out in nineteen forty-six, but the overwhelming emphasis was on the design of the residential landscape and the subdivision's architecture. This national recognition cemented my husband's and my conviction that Uplands residents and municipal representatives alike have a duty to honor and uphold the established guidelines that were developed to preserve the original vision and the unique character of the Uplands. Accordingly, my husband and I join our neighbors, the ADP, and the Oak Bay Planning Department in recommending to council that this project be denied." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Danzo. Anyone else wish to come forward to speak to us on this application? Anyone else? No, I see none. We'll bring it back to this table. So if there's any, anybody, counsel name?
Yeah, so through you, Mayor, to staff, just a couple of questions of clarification, if I may. In the, the report staff's provided, you, it's indicated that the advisory design panel denied the, the wording in the report says that, that the panel recommended council deny the proposed development to construct the, the dwelling. I'm, I'm just wondering, in light of some comments made earlier by others, could you just clarify what that, was that a, a final recommendation from the panel, or was it every, was there a consensus, or how did that work?
Ms. Jensen?
Thank you, through you, Chair. At the meeting of the advisory design panel, the application was presented to the design panel, discussion ensued. Of the three members of the design panel that were present, they did indicate to the applicant that they did have a number of concerns and whether it was warranted to bring the application back to a subsequent meeting of the design panel. Upon discussion, the applicant indicated that they would prefer to have a recommendation made by the advisory design panel at that time, and then, and, and then subsequently, you know, move, move along with their application. So the advisory design panel at that time then did make a motion to, for, for council to consider denying the application. They just had a number of concerns that had not been addressed and, and did not want to proceed with the application at that time.
Okay, that's very clear, and...
Please don't yell out. We'll, we'll happily welcome you back again to make some addresses.
And through you, Mayor, can the applicant take it back? Were it the case that the committee referred it back? Can it go back to the ADP? Just clarification based on some other comments, may?
Ms. Jensen?
If council chooses, you can refer the application back to the advisory design panel.
And my final comment, I, we've, part of the discussion that's come to this committee has been by a lawyer who's, I don't know if that was called legal advice, what we were getting here, but I, I feel a little uneasy myself right now because I've heard some legal advice, but I don't, I'm just wondering if... Through you, Mayor. Could you just get a little bit of advice, because I'm certainly not in a position to navigate what's been brought to our attention, or just for clarification perhaps, give, I mean, could you just advise about how to manage the information that's come before the committee?
I might suggest from a procedure perspective that if we're gonna seek any legal advice, we could either go in camera to do so, but if that's, given the, the claims made by the applicant in this case, it may be worthwhile for us to defer this and, and have that legal advice brought back to get some advice on, on terms of those, the claims given. That is a possibility that we have an option as well. I, I think that is a potential for a possibility. I've turned to staff to clarify my, my understanding of what our, what our options are in that case, if there's, if this question is around legal.
Your worship, if there are questions of that nature, staff would recommend that you actually refer the matter back to staff. We could go off, seek advice, and then we could provide that advice to council in closed meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Counsel, did you have any follow-up, or is that sufficient?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, and I, given the interjection from the audience on, on their one answer there perhaps, for clarification, there was, there were some, again, comments made about the, the process followed here, and can you, could staff maybe give a little bit of clarification in terms of why, when it came from ADP to staff and then to this body, it did not go back to advisory design panel when changes were made? Is there, provide some feedback to council on that fact?
Yeah, the, the mandate of the ADP is to consider applications and make recommendations to, to council. Staff provide input to the ADP for that, for that process. It's not staff's prerogative to take an application back once a committee has made a recommendation on that. That's, would be council's prerogative to refer something like that back, notwithstanding there are changes that were made by the applicants. Those have been brought forward to this meeting, to council.
Okay, thank you. And I, yeah, will note that there have been a number of changes made to the application. Council has to consider those changes, and considering the application that is in front of us, so that is the process. Any other questions or comments? Counsel, Sir Appleton?
Thank you, your worship, through you to staff. Further to that point, I note in the ADP minutes where this was reviewed, there were several comments made by panel members, not exclusively about trees, but in terms of reconsidering the accessory building sighting, providing more information about the accessory building, parking areas, and, and other detail-oriented items that the, the panel brought forward. So i- is it my understanding, or just for clarification, that even though changes have been made to the application since the ADP reviewed it at this time, that not all of the, the notations or not all the concerns raised by the ADP at that time have been incorporated into what we're seeing here?
If, if staff can answer that question, do so. Otherwise, I, just to be very clear, our responsibility, Chair, our responsibility is to ultimately make that decision on that front, but counsel, or Ms. Jensen?
Yeah, I would not want to put words into the mouths of the advisory design panel. Essentially, when they're making a recommendation, whether it's in support of or, or denying, moving forward to council, when they are summarizing that discussion, they make their recommendation, and then they provide a list of rationale as to why they're making that recommendation. So what you see in front of you in terms of the, of the advisory design panel minutes is exactly that. They summarize what their discussion has been through the course of the meeting and then making their recommendation. In terms of any modification, modifications that have been made since then, I would acknowledge that there have been some changes to the, to the design of the building and to address some of the concerns that were indicated by the design panel, but I would not want to gauge how adequately they have addressed those concerns.
Counsel Green?
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mayor.
Please do.
Unless you would like to continue comments, and then I'll, I'll speak to my motion.
Motion is, is absolutely valid at this point.
Thank you. I would like to move that we return this application to the advisory design panel for their oversight.
Before I get a second around that, I might, just given that the arguments brought forward by the applicant are primarily of a legal nature, that maybe before we do that, we actually do consideration, refer it back to staff for some, some legal opinions on, on that. That's, that's my piece, but there's a motion on the table of someone, which is a second that we can talk to that motion.
I'll withdraw the motion then, and perhaps make a new motion, and that is to refer this matter to staff for legal, a legal opinion.
Second. So this would be legal advice on the points raised by the applicant in this meeting? Are there, is there any discussion on that, Counsel Breathway?
Yeah, you know, I, I have real difficulty with that. I think that if, if we allow, when I look at the bylaw, I think the bylaw is very, very clear. I understand that Mr. Alexander is a lawyer, and he's sat here, and through you, Mayor, if I may say, I almost feel that it was... I may say, I almost feel that it was, it was like a bullying tactic that, that his comments in regards to how our staff and how our municipality have upheld a bylaw for how many years now. So to me, why, why would we allow that to happen? Why would we not look at the bylaw as, as is written and as we have been following for many, many, many years and follow it? So to me, I can't support sending this back to get a legal opinion. This is, to me then, anybody can come and sit in that chair and, and basically try and tell us that we don't have a legal leg to stand on and then we're gonna turn around and have to send it off to a lawyer and pay for a lawyer? I don't agree with that. So I would, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to vote against this, this motion.
Thank you, Counselor Braithwaite. And 84 years, I think, is the timeframe that we've had to use this bylaw in place, so it's not a unreasonable comment. Counselor Green?
Thank you. And I agree with my colleague, Counselor Braithwaite, and in essence, I do. In fact, I don't think we received legal advice tonight. I think we received a legal opinion from an independent lawyer. We did not receive advice, and it was advice that, in this context, I would have to weigh very carefully. Secondly, a number of things have changed since July when the ADP reviewed this application. One is that the, as one of our, our residents pointed out from the Uplands, the Uplands is now a national historic site that was granted in August. And I think that reinforces the value of heritage in that area, valued by the community and obviously by the federal government. And furthermore, there has been no meaningful neighborhood consultation, and I agree, Mayor, it isn't required, but many developers practice that, that behavior. They, they consult with their adjacent neighbors, they try to work with neighbors, and I think we, in fact, have a couple of developers sitting in the audience tonight that were prepared to go back and work with neighbors on another proposal in the Uplands. So I think the neighborhood consultation piece is important, in my view, and, and the trees and the context of the Uplands and the park-like setting, which has been mentioned by all of the neighbors here this evening, and thank you for coming, is, is an important feature. So I think we do have the ability to make a decision based on, on the context and based on the trees. So that's what I'd like to say, and I, those are my comments. And I do appreciate the report from staff. We also did a site visit to this property. We walked around it, and so I think we're in a very good position to make a decision.
So I'm just gonna be clear, right now we have a motion to refer for legal opinion. That's the, that's the, I just want to focus our attention on that, whether that's worthwhile or not to do. So Counselor Neay?
So, I, you know, I take the point to my council colleagues about the information that came before us, but whether it's legal opinion or advice or commentary, I, I would re, I'd like to make this decision based on good information, and what I heard this evening, it makes me question my ability to make a good decision based on the, the frameworks that we've been using. So it's another, it is an opinion, but it's kind of put me in a position where I don't feel confident right now because there's another interpretation of those bylaws, and I would like to have before, if I'm gonna make a decision on this, this application, I'd like to be very clear about what I've heard tonight. So I, I'd like to ask staff to provide us with some commentary on the information that we've heard here tonight.
Perhaps we'll go to Mr. Anderson if there's anything you wish to add into this.
What I'd like to, to say relates to, I guess what we have is we do have a bylaw that is, is distinct from any other bylaw, I believe, in B.C. respecting this matter. It is a bylaw that allows council, as we noted, the ability to approve architectural sighting and design for properties within the Uplands area. What we also have is we have an official community plan that, that is adopted by bylaw, by, by council, and it has, as the, the opinion is that those are policies. They are guidelines, if you read them, and, and they're distinct in staff's opinion from policy, but the point I want to make is that council can use the materials that they feel are applicable for their decision respecting this. The, the suggestion that it's not a development permit area, that's true. It's not a development permit area. So it's different and distinct from what we would see for our typical sort of development permit area for multifamily commercial development permit approval. So this is what we have in, in front of us. I, I think it's within council's ability to, to make reference to their community plan and, and guidelines that are specific to the Uplands and provide some guidance to council respecting that decision. And I think that's reasonable on the part of council to do so, and that is a planner's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Planner's opinion noted. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate the comments by both Counselor Green and Counselor Neay, but I, I, I find myself in agreement with Counselor Braithwaite. When I look at the documents and with what our, our Director of Planning has just indicated, we do have a, a guideline for Uplands, and it is to maintain a park-like setting. We have a NOCP that is, is firm about the same thing with respect to Uplands, that the, the, that they are architecturally unique houses, and I think we're all in agreement, there's quality in the house, but the massing of this house in the context of other houses in, within a close proximity to it, this really is very dominant on the property. And if, if we in fact supported this and all houses in Uplands went to this, we would very quickly destroy the park-like setting of Uplands. So I can't support sending this back to staff, sending it back to the design panel. I think the, the decision rests with council. I'm not prepared to support this application because I believe all of the documentation that we have is...
Can I just keep the other motion that we have, which is, the motion is just to refer it for legal opinion, so that's, you're speaking to that.
I can't support sending it, referring it for a legal opinion. I think we have our bylaws and we have our policies, and so to, to, to step aside from that and go to a legal opinion on this, then we start to, in fact, open up all of our bylaws and policies. I think our, our role at council is to support the policies that we have because we believe they're the right policies.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. And any other discussion on this, on this motion? Counselor Green?
Can I withdraw the motion?
The simplest process here is for to vote on it and move on, if that's the, well, nobody else wishes to speak. So the motion on the floor is to refer it to staff for a legal opinion. I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed? All right, thank you. We're back to the motion, to the, to this council. There's no motion on the floor at the moment.
I would make the motion that we recommend to council that the application be denied.
Second.
Moving seconded.
Actually, I'll, I'll speak to the motion if I may. I think that, for all of the reasons that I've stated so far, and that have been stated around the table, but I think Ms. Danzo said it most succinctly, and that is that we do have a duty to honor and uphold the original vision of the Uplands, and to me, that this particular building and the sighting and design does not do that. So that's why I will make this motion and will support this motion.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Okay. I'll throw in here, I think there is a, just I think in the interest of providing some feedback, and I think the applicant deserves at least to have some sense of where, and I think, I think that some, many of the comments have captured that already. I think it's important to recognize that original intent of when Oomsted laid this out and, and mapped out every single Gary Oak and tried to build his, his developments around those, that there is a value to those Gary Oaks and to the, and to the terracing of the land and to the, and to the natural features as well as to the houses. I'm always loathe to, you know, for houses that are, you know, well within the allowed size, I still believe we have to address this more from a bylaw than from a sighting and design perspective. In this case, I find the primary concern with the outbuilding and its impact on trees. I think that service of a, of a pool could be accommodated with, with a redesign in a way that did not impact the trees in such a, such a meaningful way. And I think there should be some consideration made by the applicant in the future application, should this not get through today, that there is a, that the location of new trees, especially trees that can grow to significant girth of five feet in diameter, like a large Gary Oak, be positioned in a way that they wouldn't negatively impact the neighbor's infrastructure, including driveways. So that's my two cents on the, on what I've seen on this that has merit and doesn't. And I would like to express my appreciation for the quality of the design and for the material suggested. I think that there is a lot of positives that to be taken from this. Any other comments? So we have a motion on the table to, to deny. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, and opposed? So the process in this case is, the motion is denied, does not come to council next week. There is an opportunity for the applicant to go back to AD, to staff and to ADP with revised design at any time. So thank you very much. I believe actually our, we would allow for this resubmission within, after six months, is that? Ms. Jensen, yes, that's correct. So new designs anytime, resubmission if that's the will of the applicant after six months. Thank you very much. We're now out of the land use portion of our meeting and into the communications portion. And this is a, I'll give a couple of minutes for people to leave as they see fit, and we're gonna move some staff around as well because we have different people coming to Okay, thank you, everyone. We're gonna come back to the table here and get on to the next portion. Our room is emptied out a lot. We're starting off with the corporate plan, and I think I'm gonna hand this over to Ms. Varela, our Chief Administrative Officer, and she can hand it off to the rest of the staff as, as we see fit. So go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. So I'm actually gonna very quickly hand this over to Sina, who is our Director of Strategic Initiatives. She, in cooperation with the rest of our directors, have done a great job of pulling together the district's first corporate plan, so it is a landmark for us. So I think with that, I'll just hand that right over to Sina.
Ms. Beattie, welcome.
Thank you.
Have you spoken, you have spoken once before, council, so I guess, welcome.
Thank you. So we're here as a group. You can see the, the whole gallery is filled mostly with staff tonight because we've all got a role to play in this presentation. So on behalf of all of us, we're, we're here to present the 2018 to 2022 corporate plan, and at the same time, dealing with the next item on the agenda, I've kind of grouped our presentation together on, on the two items as they're closely related. So we'll talk about both the corporate plan and the third quarter progress updates. But before we dive into that, I'd like to set a bit of context as the plan does connect to a number of other pieces that you're familiar with. So overall, the corporate plan is part of a service planning process, other pieces of which are already in place. So you'll see there the official community plan that talked about earlier tonight. We've got the five-year financial plan. We've got our annual reports, quarterly reports, and, and council's priorities. And through this presentation, I'll be talking a little bit about each of those pieces. So the corporate plan really serves as a means of aligning staff actions with council's aspiration. It's, it's the connecting piece in this story. So it's important to note that the corporate plan does not contain any new direction. All the initiatives that are contained in the corporate plan are ones that council has already approved in one way or another in, in past months and years. In reality, where do we go here? So the service planning cycle is shown here as a linear process, but in reality, it's not so much a linear process as it is a, a cycle. It's an ongoing process of refinement. So as we receive community feedback on the services we're delivering, council adjusts priorities, projects, and funding to respond. So as a result, the initiative is reflected and the corporate plan will be continually refined. This isn't a one-shot deal. This is our, our best take at it today, but it'll be undergoing continual refinement. So you'll see that there's, that first green bubble at the top represents the aspirational component. That is reflected in our official community plan vision statement. We've got some key words shown here in the OCP vision statement, some of the, the adjectives that are ascribed to our community. It's, it's a very long vision statement, but this communicates some of the, the key pieces of it. So all the work that we undertake is intended to deliver on that OCP vision, so we keep that in mind as we go along. At the start of each council mandate, you identify priorities. So these are the, the five high-level priorities you have identified as priorities for this mandate. And the, following the identification of these priorities, you went through some strategic planning exercises to identify what you wanted to take on to advance these priorities. So the priorities you have for us are to ensure access to diverse housing options within the built environment and to achieve sustainable service delivery, provide service excellence, address quality of life and health and, take on health and resilience initiatives. Sorry, my mouse here isn't quite cooperating. So the initiatives to deliver on your priorities can be implemented once funding is available. So the five-year financial plan identifies... So the five-year financial plan identifies what has been funded for each of the five years or the following five years. So this is a rotating five-year period. So the five-year financial plan will always identify what's in works for the following five-year period. So once identified for funding, the new initiatives can be included in the corporate plan. So I think it's important to identify that the corporate plan really reflects decisions that have already been made. It's not an aspirational document in and of itself. All the services we deliver, both new and ongoing, must be delivered within the context of our mission. And that mission is is really taken straight out of our Local Government Act, provincial document. And through that act, our responsibilities are identified as being to provide for good government, to provide services, laws, for community benefit, to steward public assets, and to foster economic, social, and environmental well-being. As we deliver on that mission, we monitor what we're doing so that we can report back on our performance. And this information allows the public to provide feedback and supports you in making decisions about how to allocate future budgets. So that reporting back happens through our annual report. Our monitoring is a work in progress. So this this past year's annual report was the most comprehensive you've probably seen to date. But it despite that, we're not ending our efforts at improvement there. We'll be continuing to to refine the document as we move forward. We do hope to expand specifically on the metrics component of the annual report that we provided to you this year, specifically to probably look more at some outcome measurements. We really focused on on output metrics this past year. But as we go forward, we'll be looking at expanding that and also looking at coming up with metrics that more directly relate to council's priorities. We receive feedback through a number of means, including letters, phone calls, emails, citizen satisfaction surveys, ongoing input to council, including the one I'll put in a plug here for the special community meeting tomorrow night. Those kinds of input opportunities are what feeds into that feedback process that allows us to adjust, you call the service planning cycle, the adjustment cycle. The feedback is is a key part of that adjustment cycle. So the past few slides have provided a high-level overview of each of the components of the service planning cycle. The components, just a quick refresher, include aspiring, aligning, acting, achieving, and adjusting. So the purpose of today's session is to talk about that big blue bubble, the alignment phase. Many jurisdictions have a corporate plan that makes the connection between council's aspirations, the green circle, and staff's action, the the medium blue circle. And in many places, that's called a corporate plan. And now this is the first time we have that kind of document. So the intent is that the corporate plan will provide clear direction on the projects to be undertaken and the objectives to be achieved. And while we haven't had one before, we that's not to say that we haven't had the type of content that's included in the corporate plan. It was just included in other documents. So that very comprehensive annual report I spoke of earlier on, that had really all the elements of a corporate plan, it just wasn't called a corporate plan. So the annual report included information that both was backward-looking, which is typical content for an annual report. But it also included that forward-looking component that is typically part of a corporate plan. So what we've done now is to 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 separate out those two pieces. Many jurisdictions have that kind of plan that makes the connection between council's actions and or staff's actions and council's aspirations. So why have a corporate plan? The corporate plan is about setting the stage. It provides the foundation for corporate action. Having a document such as this, a document that sets out what will be done, when, and why, is considered a municipal best practice. So you'll see the reasons there. I won't go over them in in specific detail, but there are there are many good reasons for having a corporate plan. So what's in the corporate plan? The corporate plan is really taking pieces, as I said before, that are included or previously included in other documents, including things that we identified as as being needed to be done in the official community plan, projects that were identified in the financial plan, projects that were identified in the annual report, and council's approved projects. So rather than have that direction in five different documents, four or five different documents, we're suggesting that that direction be captured in in one document called a a corporate plan. And in fact, it was just it was interesting. My very first week on this job, I've been here almost two months now. My very first week, I actually had a message in my inbox from someone asking where was the document that would identify where the where the corporation was headed? And so I guess to that to that member of the public, this is the answer to to that query. The corporate plan captures those initiatives that require special focus or oversight, significant new initiatives, or projects that require additional short-term funding, contractors, consultants, support, staff supplies, advertising, et cetera. So that's really the the new initiatives component. That's what feeds into the corporate plan. The gray part of this triangle shown on the screen reflects the ongoing services. And this graphic is really just intended to suggest that although the corporate plan includes a lot of initiatives, it by no means reflects the entirety of staff's effort. There is a significant portion of work that that is simply ongoing that we continue to do even as we're advancing those new initiatives. Of course, taking on new initiatives can be tricky because new initiatives can essentially disturb the equilibrium, as I attempted to show on this slide. So it's really important that as we take on the weight of new initiatives that we consider how that impacts resources and make sure that the impact of that is addressed in the context of the entire service planning cycle. So that's where we want to make sure that the initiatives can be implemented both from a staffing perspective as well as a resourcing perspective. And that's why we don't include items in the corporate plan until they've been included, the financial components have been addressed, and they've been reflected in the in the financial plan. So we acknowledge that the service planning cycle and the corporate plan in particular will be a work in progress, and each piece will continue to be refined as council provides further feedback and approves future budgets. So as much as the service planning cycle and the corporate plan are works in progress, we do have some early successes to celebrate. Highlight here three of them. There are of course more, but just briefly talk about three highlights from the past year, starting with the comprehensive orientation that happened subsequent to council's election and the thorough strategic planning that happened on the heels of that. And then the budget follow-through. So council had a lot of discussions about priorities and and what to fund and made some significant decisions, particularly with respect to funding of asset management initiatives, the 1% that was set aside for pavement management, the 2% that was set aside to build up the reserves to allow for future sewer and water infrastructure improvements. Those were significant changes from past practices and and a real early success. And then followed on by the annual report that was advanced to council this past spring, as I alluded to earlier on, the most comprehensive yet. So as much as we can celebrate some early successes, we do have some significant to-dos on our list for the years ahead. I've listed here three of them. The long-term sustainability, our financial sustainability plan, water and sewer plans, and housing frameworks. And because of their importance, and because I'm not the experts on either of any of those three, this is a point where I'll I'll turn things over to the staff who are responsible for leading those, starting with Donna Costin, our deputy director of financial services, who will briefly talk about long-term financial sustainability plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the district is taking important steps towards managing the long-term sustainability of the community's assets and services. We foster financial stability by carefully planning long-term expenditures and revenues and addressing the spending peaks and valleys. The district is continually pursuing revenue opportunities from senior government and addressing the spending pressures and service demands, which are always changing. The long-term financial sustainability plan will further develop over the upcoming year with the onboarding of the new director of financial services.
Thank you, Ms. Costin. So short and sweet, I love that.
I don't know if I'm going to be that short and sweet. So the in budget 2019 in in May, there was a that was kind of the at that stage is a snapshot, there was the orientation post-election, and then strategic priorities process, and then the budget development, where the focus of that was the the things that were still to be decided in the budget 2019. So water and sewer rates were were decided back in December of 2018, and there was no real opportunity to provide the council and the community with options for the future and and staff recommendations on on what's ahead in terms of sustainable service delivery in those two areas. So all we're trying to do in here is to draw attention to now because same thing, it's a little bit offset in terms of the tempo and and time of the year. There's the next steps for us is to bring you some information about what the future looks like for water and sewer, sanitary sewer, sorry? And then and then that will allow align us and we'll be in a a good place to in the annual process to give you all the information you need about the full picture of infrastructure.
Mr. Anderson?
That was.
That was pretty short and sweet.
Short and sweet. Thank you, worship mayor, your member, council.
He has three pages in the report. You'd think there'd be something more than that. Mr. Anderson, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so the previous slide noted something that's referred to as a housing framework. And I think that's really helpful for us to to maybe think of our approach to looking at housing options in the community in the context of a housing framework. That framework will allow us to provide a guide for Oak Bay in terms of a comprehensive approach to housing options. The framework is actually based on the official community plan and housing policy directions that are contained in that community plan. And the housing framework intends to allow for implementation of council's strategic priority, which is to ensure access to diverse housing options within the built environment. And I'll go on a little bit with the extended version, and that is which reflects the unique character of Oak Bay's neighborhood and village centers by reviewing and planning for community needs. So we have a priority. We have policy directions that we spoke to earlier at the orientation. And we're left with a framework approach that would be developed through basically a series of initiatives. Those initiatives are strategic and identified by council. And I would just like to note them, and I believe they're on the slide as well, is that we have a secondary suites study initiative underway, a housing, housing needs report. We also intend to look at infill housing options or opportunities within the community and and subsequently to look at village area plans, and particularly to look at perhaps more multifamily forms of of housing. So we have basically through the review of of these initiatives, we will sort of land on a framework once we decide on our implementation approach to to all of the different housing forms that would come out of this these series of reviews. So and I just would note that we're currently engaged in the housing needs report and the secondary suite study as initiatives as a part of developing this framework. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Continuing along, we acknowledge that as we implement those projects and other projects on our to-do list, we acknowledge that there will be challenges. A few are listed here, represented by the the people pushing the heavy objects ahead there. A a few key ones, staff are working at maximum capacity. So if even if additional dollars are provided to accelerate capital spending through the asset management program, for example, it'll be difficult to spend that unless we increase staffing. So staffing will be needed to oversee contracts, manage public consultation, et cetera. So that's a that's a piece we'll need to 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 move forward in in discussions with council as we as we go forward with with future budget discussions. There are also ongoing issues with ensuring sustainable service levels. We know, for example, that the public expectations with respect to some services are continuing to increase. We have continual changes in legislation that are are requiring us to take on new responsibilities that we haven't had in the past. And so as we move forward, we'll need to to discuss how those get addressed. And then finally, managing corporate risks. We'll be undertaking a human resources plan to deal with occupational health and safety issues and and other HR-related matters. We'll be undertaking some work on the freedom of information front to to address our corporate risks in that regard. So you will be seeing as as we move forward in the in the coming months, some some desire for discussions around some of those topics. So in summary, the purpose of the corporate plan is to how we will identify some of those risks and and overcome the challenges. We are confident that with council support and a strong staff team and an enthusiastic community that we will in 2022 look back with pride on what's been accomplished over the time period of this corporate plan. Staff's recommendation is that council receive the corporate plan and authorize staff to update it as necessary following council budget decisions so as to keep the document current. So that concludes our presentation on the corporate plan. Before I move on to talk a bit about metrics and our year-to-date progress report, which is the next item on the agenda, we thought we'd pause here and see if there's any comments or questions, but we do have several more slides to get through.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Baye. Council agreed?
Through you, mayor. Thank you very much for a comprehensive report and the slides. Just a question, you said that the updating would occur is tied to the financial planning. So that would be once a year? Is that what you anticipate?
Through the through the chair, the the thought is that this would be updated following the budget review process. So once we know what council's decisions are with respect to the new council priorities, those would be captured in this document. And we would reflect updates to the five-year financial plan in the new initiatives tables following council's budget directions.
So just in a nutshell, it would be once a year that we'd update?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
And and then the date would be updated on the front of this document. It is a it is shown as a as a four-year plan, but it would be so there's an October 2019 date there right now. When it's updated next year, we would change that to a 2020 date so that the the everyone's aware of which version that we're dealing with.
Well, thank you very much because it's pretty exciting for Oak Bay to have its first corporate plan, I think. So thank you so much.
You know, we're nerdy when we get excited about a corporate plan, yeah. Is there any other questions or council name?
I this is kind of a little bit menial, and I don't mean it to some, because I really appreciate this report. It's clear, it's straightforward, it reflects what you've said, it reflects. But I love the photos. Thank you for those photos. It just it really heartens to Oak Bay. So I don't know if these are the mayor's photos or whatever. They are, okay? Whether you're getting better, okay? Thank.
Councilor Patterson?
Thank you. And I'm I to add to the other comments, I really do appreciate the work and acknowledge all of the staff work that has gone into this document. I do have some concerns. And I, you know, I think the best thing is I'll give you my concerns, and then we can decide how we go to address them. My my primary concern, I guess, is is what I am looking for is the intent of of section 98 of the community charter with respect to timing and content for annual reports. I do think that there's a, you know, link between strategic plans and annual reports and financial reporting. And so I'm looking for certainly annual reports and all of the information that that is fulsome to that being handled in a way so that the the reporting coincides. And, you know, I may be the one person at this table who actually does read all members of the CRDs, budget estimates, and their annual reports. And and so I, you know, I do the comparisons. And so that's what I'm looking for is the timeliness of that and having the extra document while I can work with it, it does make it more cumbersome. And so I'm looking for that, the timing of it.
So can we just, if you want to phrase it as a question, like? So, can we just, if you want to phrase it as a question, like, is there, is there an expected time?
By legislation, the annual report has to come out at the end of June. And so, there is no legislation that speaks specifically to a corporate plan. It is about the annual report. And so, getting cohesive information that is timely around that time element, so I can, so that it can be benchmarked to performance of others, I think is also an important consideration. We're not doing that right now, but I'm still looking to where I hope to get to.
If you don't mind, I might just pose that as a question. Is there, is there an expected time, because maybe that's something we could speak to, for future corporate plans? In that circle of informational sharing, are there dates that are, that have been applied, aspirational dates? I know we're still working on our, on moving our budget cycle earlier and things, but is there, is there an endpoint that staff have envisioned from? If not, that's fine at this point.
Through the chair, the intent certainly is still to have the annual report fulfill all the legislative requirements of annual reports, so the existence of the corporate plan is not intended to take away in any way from the content, the required content of the annual report. The reality is that this annual report that we just released this year included far more than an annual report needs to legislatively with respect, because typically, the focus of an annual report is retrospective rather than forward-looking, and the corporate plan serves that function of looking forward. So, the intent is to really capture the new initiatives in the corporate plan and to report on the performance, including the metrics, for example, in the annual report. So, going forward, the intent would be to discuss, and I'll get that into the metrics piece of it a little bit later in this presentation, but to incorporate the updated metrics in the annual report, reporting out on those metrics, and those would be done on the fiscal year calendar. The intent of staff is to have discussions with council later this year about what those metrics might look like in terms of content, and then for us to report on the actual numbers as part of the annual reporting process. The corporate plan would then really just identify what those metrics were, because the, in terms of what we're measuring, it wouldn't actually identify necessarily how we're performing, because that's the purpose of the annual report, to include that content. In terms of exactly how the timeline works with the budget, we're hoping to get that sorted out very soon, as soon as our Director of Financial Services is hired. I've already been in discussions with him about aligning some of these timelines and some of what we may be able to do in terms of better knitting together the financial information and the budget cycles with the corporate planning process. So, exactly how that aligns will be further shaken out once that staff position is filled.
Thank you, Ms. Bay. That's very helpful. Councilor Patterson?
If I can continue with the question then? Thank you for that explanation. Just for clarification then, when, I think one of the shortfalls, although the last annual report certainly had made more positive steps forward, although it was very, very fulsome and probably could have been edited down, but then where do you foresee in this, in this planning that the actual performance indicators would be established, so that we would be measuring performance in the future?
Ms. Bay?
Thank you through the chair.
Two months and you get all the good, easy questions.
Yes. So, the intent is for us, as part of this year's council priorities discussion, for us to have a discussion as well about metrics, so that will be the establishing piece. We can, after they've been established, we can do an update on the corporate plan to identify what it is that we will be measuring so that public is aware of it, and the document can capture some of that. And then the intent is that we would report out on our actual performance as part of the annual report process.
Council Patterson, keep going.
Can I continue? Thank you, and I thank you for that information, too. Now, some of this may be my perspective also of a corporate plan, where a corporate plan, from the document here, the way it's set up, I guess, is conflicts with my understanding of a corporate plan. Corporate plan being a few, it gets away from departments or divisions and focuses on a few hierarchy goals that then are supported by the entire operation. And so, I guess, as a way I read this report, I guess what I was expecting to see was council's priorities listed as the overriding goals and the action plans going under it, rather than it is presented really, basically by departments. And I guess in my mind, the corporate plan is to get away from that, look at the big ones that are an umbrella of all, everyone contributes to, while still recognizing the really important value, and I think there is a real important value, to core services that are still department issues, and I don't want to lose those, because so much of what we do in Oak Bay is actually our core services, and service excellence in those areas is a really, really important issue. So, I find when you get long lists like this, I have a harder time focusing on what are council's core strategic priorities, so separating council's priorities from the operational goals. And so, I found even this document was quite fulsome in all of these items, and not really, I couldn't easily see, okay, on the housing plan, where are the issues that support that? And so, it's almost to me, it was more like it had a department focus rather than a council focus, and I'm looking very much for the council focus items.
I don't really want to respond to that at all. I certainly hear there's be any number of ways of organizing this kind of information, and I do appreciate the fact that these are all, the council priorities are highlighted beside each of these items, but perhaps you can just speak to the reasons why it was done this way, and anything else you want to add?
Absolutely. Thank you. Through the chair, there are numerous ways one can identify a document like this. This is kind of a made-in-Oak Bay solution based on where we're at with the information that we have available right now, recognizing again back to my earlier comment about it's a work in progress. Reality, it could be whatever council wants it to be. If you'd like to provide direction, that'd be something else, we'll take that direction, and we can, we can take it back and change it up. The rationale for doing it the way that we did it was that this was content that was moved over from the annual report. This was how it was organized in the annual report. We did attempt, as the mayor identified, to at least identify the connection through to council's priorities. These are the new initiatives that are being focused, so these are the initiatives, in essence, that have required some additional level of effort. So, either they've been funded with additional money, or they have a significant, they require a significant staff effort, they have high public profile, or some combination of that in terms of being significant for the corporation. So, in some cases, it was difficult to determine, is it an operational item or is it truly strategic? We had to make that decision call on a couple of them. One could probably argue some of them maybe are too operational to be in the document. Maybe there's other things that are going on that are strategic that aren't covered in the document. That's part of kind of moving our way forward and refining this document as we move on. In terms of the organization by department, it was really done in anticipation of setting the stage for a closer link between the corporate plan and the budgeting process, and the budgeting is done by department rather than by council priority, and that's to, because council's priorities can change from year to year and will probably almost definitely change from council mandate to council mandate. So, if we're to have some way of tracking this over time, and that's really where these kinds of documents start to hold their value, is when you can go back and say, well, how, what was corporate services doing 10 years ago? What was engineering works and works and public works doing 10 years ago? And tracing that through the budget cycles and ensuring that there is, in fact, some ability to relate the corporate plan to the budget documents. And that, again, ties in and sets the stage for the metrics, which are reported on typically by department, given the types of metrics that we've had in the past. But the bottom line is, if you don't like the way it's organized right now, let us know, and it can be changed, but those were the thoughts behind how it's been set up.
Thank you, Ms. Bay. Councilor Patterson?
Thank you very much for the clarifications. I do have more questions, but they would be mostly tied in with financials, so we were going to leave them. I think you've already identified that, and so, I, you know, thank you for listening to the concerns and responding, that it is a work in progress, and I realize that you are limited to some degree by the records that you have to work from now, but, you know, I think now that you have a better understanding of some of the information I'm looking for, and that then it'll help perhaps guide future discussions for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Patterson. Is there any other pieces on this, on the corporate plan portion? Seeing that, we'll move on to the progress report, and then I will open it up for the public if they want to come forward and speak to both of these, because they are kind of conjoined together.
Thank you.
Ms. Bay, welcome back.
Through the chair. Moving on to our year-to-date progress report, reflecting activities up to the end of the third quarter or the end of September. So, monitoring performance helps the district focus staff and resources on what's important and sets the stage for continuous improvement. As I mentioned earlier, our metrics are reported on in annual reports, which can be read in person at Oak Bay Municipal Hall or online. Historically, metrics have related primarily to departmental output and activity measures. As I mentioned earlier on, going forward, we'll explore how those can be expanded to also capture more outcome types of measures, as well as capturing how the performance supports council's priorities. So, why use metrics? Well, used well, metrics can help us focus and align district, departmental, and staff efforts. They can provide us with useful feedback, they can drive performance, they can help us communicate successes and challenges, help us support good decision-making, and set the stage for continuous improvement. And metrics often relate to quantitative measures, and we are aiming to make significant progress on our metrics by the end of the year. And as I alluded to earlier on, the intent is to have a workshop with council, to have a discussion about what would be meaningful to council and what's possible to capture. And of course, a question with metrics always is, how much effort do you want to put into it compared to how much value you get out of it? So, as an important audience for the metrics is council, we want to make sure that what we're spending staff effort on collecting is meaningful and resonates with council. So, as I mentioned earlier, we are on a journey of continuous improvement. Our hope is to by year-end have made progress on the initiatives listed on the slide here, specifically with respect to the quarterly financial updates. This year, we are aiming to, by December, provide a Q3 financial update with a focus on full-year forecasts, so that we can get a head start on budget discussions. We're also, in 2020, moving forward to have Q2 reports available on, sorry, just cut off on my notes here, Q2 reports for, available. By the end of July, and in Q3 have reports with full-year forecasts by the end of December. And that's in discussions with our newly hired Director of Financial Services. He's indicated that those are the, his aspirational targets in terms of changes to make. And then also, we'll have council's annual review of priorities by the end of the year, and working to develop departmental work plans and improve metrics, as talked about. Dan mentioned earlier a little bit about the timelines and tracking and in relation to some of his projects. So, this is also related to some of the work that we will be doing on reporting out on progress, and this relates as well to some of the updates we'll be giving you in a few minutes. The budget cycle that we're ideally moving to is having as close as possible to the budgets approved earlier on in the year to reflect this kind of cycle, regardless of where we're at now in terms of the approval of cycles. Certainly, our reporting out on our financial performance is done on a fiscal year basis of January to December, and typically, our project cycle is more like April to March. So, there is a bit of an offset there in terms of how we're reporting, and that's why I'm bringing it up here, in that after council approves the budget, only then can we start to spend the money. And so, you'll see in the updates that I'm about to provide that in some cases, the work won't be done by year-end, but it'll still be done by the date that we intended it to be done. And so, in some cases, the end conclusion date is still, it's a year's project, but the year started in spring and will end in spring, as opposed to starting in spring and ending by our fiscal year. So, there's obviously a connection there to some of our financial reporting as well. Moving on to tracking of 2019 progress, I've got several slides coming up where staff will talk about where we're at with each of our projects, and we've used this kind of iconography, both in these slides as well as in the reports that you have with you, to indicate where we're at in the progress. So, I just thought I'd spend a few minutes here just talking about what each of those icons mean. The blue circle with the explanation mark means that it's still on our to-do list, which means that we haven't started it yet, but we're still very aware that the project is to be started. There aren't a whole lot of those, I'm happy to report. Most of them fall into the, into the green category that I'll talk about in a minute. The yellow icon indicates that we have started the project, and we anticipate that work will progress steadily, but it may be slightly delayed from the originally completed, or initially contemplated completion timeline. There aren't a whole lot of those either, I'm happy to say. Most of them fall into these next two categories of being in progress with completion expected on the original timeline or being complete. So, that kind of sets the stage for the updates that you'll be getting from the departmental directors here. We have set it up by department, so each of the departmental directors who are responsible for the various initiatives will now provide a little bit of an explanation as to where we're at. The reports that you have before you include the information that I'll be showing here, as well as a brief comment on where we're at with our progress, so that the public has easy access to that information as well. So, starting off with administration, I believe we will be led off by our...
Director of Corporate Services, Ms. Hopkins.
Director of Corporate Services, thank you. I just blanked.
It's not fair to put you in that chair as the emcee. Welcome, Ms. Hopkins.
Thank you. So, I'll be sharing this responsibility with my colleagues here, so I'll start off with the first few. So, the district's records and information management program is currently under review. We have retained consulting services to provide assistance to this multi-year initiative. We are on target to meet our first phase goals, including drafting of policies and a records classification system for the district, as well as implementation in a pilot department. In August of 2019, the district hired a communications specialist. So, over the past two months, we've expanded our digital media platforms and related activities. Development of engagement strategies that support organizational priorities and objectives are currently underway, and it's also worth noting that enhancement of public engagement and communication is considered to be an ongoing initiative and forms part of our commitment to continuous improvement. In summer of 2019, we arranged for Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act training for elected officials through the Local Government Management Association. We're currently scheduling additional FOIPA training for council and staff, and we plan to have media training scheduled in early 2020. And I will invite the manager of Human Resources to provide an update on the development of the HR plan.
Welcome, Ms. Donnelly.
Thank you. Well, I have one initiative I get to speak on, but it's a mighty one, because it involves getting the work done through our staff in the organization, and so, I'm pleased to say that I've started to initiate a human resources plan, and it will be a multi-year plan with benchmarks and deliverables. And... will be a multi-year plan with benchmarks and deliverables. And I'm hoping to deliver a framework by early 2020. I think it's important because I think some people kind of are a bit confused by what a human resources plan is. And it's something that I hold near and dear to my heart because it's a holistic thing for an organization. And it really is about ensuring that we have the right staff with the right skills in the right places at the right time. And so it's a planned approach as opposed to an ad hoc approach. And the plan really is about, you know, there's a number of different components to the plan, but it's about ensuring that we have a sustainable workforce. And it's about ensuring that we maximize the success of the accomplishment of council's goals. So it's a real important thing. It's a new thing for the district, and so I'm excited to be working on that in conjunction with my colleagues and collaboration with my colleagues. Without going into too much detail, some of the components of a human resources plan will include things like workforce planning, will include things like training and development and leadership development, succession planning, because we really have to be kind of, we have to be thinking ahead. And, you know, it's really, really there as a roadmap to ensure our success as an organization. So that's not an exhaustive list we have to go through, and we have to really determine what the priorities are in relation to what council's objectives are. And so that's something that we're really excited to be able to deliver in early 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Donnelly. I would like just to add one thing on this is I think that it's fantastic that's happening. And since most of them are here today, I just want to also just express my appreciation for the skill sets and the work ethic and the approach taken by the leadership team in place right now. It's a really positive one. This kind of taking ownership and finding the direction and pieces is, it makes our job much easier up here to see that being done. So just want to express my appreciation for all that's done to kind of move these things forward. So thank you. Oh, Counselor Green, do you want to ask a question?
No, not a question. I was just going to say the same thing, that I'm really excited about the HR plan. I think it's a great initiative, and thank you.
All right. Ms. Rella?
Well, I'm equally proud, so good on us. So review of the strategic plan, budget, and annual report processes. So I think, you know, we've had real success this year. Again, we've talked about improvement being the long game, multi-year. We've talked about council's ownership, providing direction from the table, and staff being responsive to those directions. And I think we've really delivered on that with the products before you. Certainly, the annual report, we worshiped that extensively with council. The five-year financial plan saw a very different presentation style this year. And now with a new corporate plan before you, I think that's, those are great strides that you can be really proud of and staff should be really proud of. I know we're all excited about having Sina onboard to assist us with metrics and with the new Director of Financial Services coming onboard. We're going to facilitate more advancement on the strategic planning and the linkages between those pieces going forward. Certainly with what we anticipate for budget and those kinds of optimizations going forward, we're having discussions about doing Q3 reportings with full-year forecasts by late October. Great improvement for you. Stronger links to service levels and the budget, improved timelines for budget, so moving those up. Coming up in the somewhat near future, staff are going to be creating an opportunity for council to provide a governance lens to sewer and water rates, as Dan had mentioned. And tonight, you're getting a new format for department updates, so I think there's some real strides there. When we talk about organizational optimization, these have been varying in scale, but I think collectively, they have a lot of power for how we're doing business more effective and more friendly, if you will. So everything from, we've made some great strides with having the agendas published earlier. That was a comment that we heard loud and strong, both from the council table and from the public. You're seeing agendas produced in a more user-friendly format, easier to read and understand. Significant advancements in social media and other forms of public engagement, for example, our special meeting we have coming up on tomorrow night, Wednesday, October 23rd. And we have a third and final for 2019 on November 4th. We've created a position for Director of Strategic Initiatives, which we should be really proud of. We've got a bunch of new policies that are in the works, procurement whistleblower, a number of significant policies for the organization that are being updated. Significant work going into that procedure by law. Deb and I can attest to that right now. We've initiated records management. We've undertaken FOIPA training for Freedom of Information and Privacy Protection training for council, and we have upcoming training for staff in Q4. So some really great things there. And the review of the volunteer advisory bodies is coming before council in a special meeting on Thursday. So again, great strides on items five, six, and seven that council and staff can be really proud of.
It's back to me. So the increased access to website support was completed with the approval of the 2019 budget. The increased funding allows staff to place more service requests with our website provider and access additional technical support to optimize existing capabilities, which we continue to take advantage of. As our CAO has just mentioned, we have a review currently underway of the procedure by law. And the target completion timeline for the review is prior to the end of Q4 for this year. And once completed, the review will then proceed to council for consideration and feedback. So with that, I will pass the floor back to our Director of Strategic Initiatives to continue the update.
Thank you. Our lease with Oak Bay Marina is expiring at the end of 2022, so you'll see there is a new initiative, the negotiation of a new lease for the Marina area for 2023 and beyond, expecting it to be approximately a 30-year lease aligned with the two previous 30-year leases. So in terms of where we're at with that, we have issued a request for proposals for consulting services that will be necessary to support that process. And that was done just recently, so shortly, staff will be coming back with a report to council on next steps on that. That's item 10. With respect to deer management, number 11, staff have been working closely with the Urban Wildlife Stewardship Society to carry out a deer management research project involving the application of immunocentreption to deer. 60 does have received that treatment over the past few weeks, and boostering is now almost complete with the imminent start of rutting season, just in the nick of time, I think. We will have the opportunity to apply for further provincial funding to extend the program to, for another year. And we'll be bringing forward a report to council likely next week with that information. So we'll be providing both, council both with an update on 2019 initiatives, as well as bringing forward an application for council's consideration with respect to submitting something to the province for next year. With respect to item number 12, Oak Bay Lodge, we have recently commenced discussions with the Capital Regional Hospital District. The Capital Regional Hospital District is in charge of that property in terms of them being the owner, once the existing residents at Oak Bay Lodge are moved over to the Summit Building, which is anticipated in the next couple of months. So we're anticipating that there'll be a need for discussions with the CRHD on that front, so we are in progress on that. With respect to item number 13, the Todd House, we have commissioned a contractor to complete a heritage assessment of that building. And results of that assessment are expected to be delivered to council early in 2020. And then finally, in terms of my items, with respect to the Senotaph, we received a $25,000 grant from the federal government to support us in restoring the war memorial. Contractors are currently working on refreshing the path, adding a removable handrail, and cleaning up the monument. We're hoping that most of that work will be done by November 11th, but some may need to wait until after that. We are certainly working towards making sure that the facility is usable for the upcoming ceremonies.
Thank you. For financial services, most of our initiatives are followed council priority, which is providing service excellence. So the first one is upgrading the software to implement the additional school taxes. We had to update software, and we were able to provide additional tax levies for the province and put it in the property taxes. That was completed in Q1, quarter one. Also, the implementation of the new employer's health tax that was levied by the province, that was also completed in quarter one. We've enhanced, we're actively working on updating the existing procurement process. There's a couple of components. One is looking at the existing procurement templates and updating those for soliciting proposals. And also, we have drafted a new procurement policy, which will be reviewed by the new Director of Financial Services, and then we'll send it to legal. And we've anticipated that to be completed by quarter four. We've commenced development of the long-term financial plan by lengthening the lens to further out into the future. And we've continued the long-term financial plan and asset management by developing the asset management pieces. And we prioritize this by actually, we've put it in the deliverables of hiring the new Director of Financial Services as well. So number six was the install the network connectivity and display the committee for the committee room for staff. That was completed in quarter three during the shutdown. And also in quarter three, we expanded the viewing capacity for overflow into the hall to help citizens watch the council meetings should there be the need. Number eight, we, undertaking the new budget software implementation, we'd like to defer this to 2020. We want the new input of the Director of Financial Services. And we've had some, well, due to the vacancy there too as well, we just haven't had the resources in order to be able to do that. We're currently undergoing the Tempest.net upgrade, which is the back end of Tempest, which actually will provide more enhancements to citizens on the website. So I'm really excited to put that forward, and we'll be able to see quite a bit of new enhancements for citizens. So we've anticipated that to go live in quarter four. Once that happens, I certainly will give a demonstration to council, and we can show all the new enhancements that are happening. Number 10 was, yes, we've completed the new recruitment of the new Director of Financial Services. We're very excited to have him onboard come November 12th. Number 11 was undertaking departmental training and team building. This was both valuable to management and staff, and we were able to bring away some tools for everyday life during work and also in private life too as well. Number 12 was a upgrade to the payroll system. This was unplanned. The vendor required us to upgrade to a system that was in the Canadian cloud as they were moving the existing old system into the North American cloud, and that doesn't comply with our Privacy Act. So that's actually taken quite a bit of resources from several departments because it had to do with all payroll and everything. So actually, it's been, it's been quite a burden on staff, but they've been, they should be very proud because they've been able to manage the project, and we've anticipated it to go live in quarter four.
And much faster than the federal government.
I think, because Counselor Zelka isn't here, I'm just going to say this because I know he would if he was here. Thank you for number nine, because I think that's his baby is the Tempest. So thank you for, on behalf of Counselors Zelka.
Counselor Green?
Thank you. And thank you very much, Ms. Kostin. Did they pay for the upgrade?
Yes, they paid. Well, they paid for the new software, and they've actually done the implementation, but it took quite a bit of our resources because we have three collective agreements, we have exempt staff, and we have council. So we have quite a bit, actually seven different types of payrolls that I don't think they quite anticipated the scope of the project. So, yeah.
So it wasn't entirely cost neutral, but at least we didn't have to pay for the hardware?
Exactly. It wasn't hardware, it was mostly the implementation. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And staff time.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Kostin. We have Police Services next. Look at your nice short list. And I just want to point out, just in the interest of, not to put any pressure on you, but it is 9:43 at the moment, and we're going to have to have an extension motion if we want to go past 10 o'clock. So we'll try and keep things, oh, 10:30. Okay, so we'll do it. We'll definitely wrap it up by 10:30. Thank you, Ms.
Okay, really quick here. Yes. So as you know, we report directly to the police board. And I'll just go back one quick step. The 90-10 slide that was shown, that works, that's a lot for us as well, or similar to us, where a big, our bread and butter is always going to be response to calls, 911, public assistance, that sort of thing. But when we have the opportunity to do proactive work, that's where our sort of priorities come in. Obviously, the long-term goal is the more proactive work, maybe our calls for service go down. But, so we have a five-year strategic plan. 20 goes from 2018 to 22. And the three overreaching priorities that were identified were enhance community engagement and visibility, reduce property crime, and improve traffic safety. And those came directly from the community as well as from our own staff and statistical analysis and that sort of thing. So we have a number of initiatives that meet each of those priorities. Some of them will be ongoing for five years. Some will come and go as we assess it every year. We report out quarterly to the police board with a year-end report. And at the beginning of each year, we sit down with our staff and we just look at the situation, and we determine which initiatives are we going to continue, which are we going to say are complete, and which are going to be new items. So I'm not going to get into every initiative that would put us past our 10:30 time, but I can say that we are virtually on track with our initiatives. We're quite happy with the way things are going. And just as sort of a side note, most communities, when I've worked in property crime, traffic, and youth, or drugs, or, you know, that third one, in Oak Bay, it's community engagement, which shows how important it is. So we do put a lot of effort into community engagement. And that's basically our brand, for lack of a better term. So if there is any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Brinton. My microphone on. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. You're worshiping council. I just placed my glasses on here so I don't miss anything. I think I'll take a page out of Chief Brinton's book and try and keep this brief so you can finish on time. Our, as you can see, our initiatives up there, a few more in number, but I think there's a few items within the Fire Department that we're trying to become a little more strategic on, although they may look operational in nature. There's a number of things that we're trying to take a longer-term view and planning, putting a longer-term planning lens against those. Our Fire Department Health and Wellness Program has been going very well. We've really emphasized the mental resilience this year. And a lot of that is the longer-term planning and looking at work safe in the mind, body, spirit from cancer presumption to PTSD presumption, and where are we going to be with our recruits in 10 years, 20 years from now, and what can we do on the preventive approach to make sure that we're in a good space down the road. Our dispatch contract was renewed for five years with Sanich. The Capital Regional Emergency Services Telecommunication System has been, has been now upgraded to P25 digital. Victoria is still coming onboard. They just had some, a few other technical glitches, but they'll be onboard expected this year as well. Looking at our training, we've increased training and officer competencies against, again, this is going with that longer-term vision into the future, community expectations for all our to make sure that we have a consistent product and consistent, good decisions across the board. The exterior of the fire hall, I'm glad to report that it is complete, and it's looking much better. The enlargement of the fire hall bay door is taking a little bit longer than expected. We're, we've done a bit more of an analysis to ensure that the interior of the hall as well will be as large as possible to make sure that we don't pigeonhole ourselves into any particular fire apparatus when we go out to tender. And then this last item on hoses, nozzles, et cetera, it sounds very operational in nature. However, this all has to do with the long-term replacement strategy for all our equipment. So we're going to be looking out and have this strategy in place partially now, and it's continuing to be developed to ensure that all our equipment is replaced on a regular schedule with costs amortized over the life of the equipment.
Thank you, Chief Hughes. Any questions? Nope, thank you. Thank you very much. I believe Ms. Grant, you're up next.
I think Darren turned off your microphone.
There we are. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for including me. We had five initiatives, and they're all quite, they all look quite operational in nature. However, they are part of the larger strategy of the emergency department to keep the community safe in light of a, an emergency or disaster. So number one and number five are related. All of them are part of a, the UBCM Provincial Grant Program. We've been successful in, with three of our grant applications. And the first two of our $25,000 grants are complete, and that enabled us to get a refurbished container where we can store all of our emergency supplies, two new trailers, and emergency support services supplies, and radio equipment. And the third $25,000 grant is underway with completion scheduled for early 2020, and it is part of a regional evacuation plan. Items two and three are part of our ongoing emergency preparedness information program, which is aimed at preparing Oak Bay residents to be self-sufficient for a minimum of seven days following an emergency or disaster. So these are our information sessions, which we hold, we hold about six of them for the general public. We talk to strata groups, and I say that any, any more than six people will talk to you. And so, and we do a lot of public outreach as well. And the Grade Three Program, we're in the midst of establishing a partnership with the province. They have a initiative called Master of Disaster, and we're looking at dovetailing with that. And then, item four is part of our, that is a ongoing piece as well, and is part of our emergency management training strategy for staff, which includes coursework and exercises. This exercise, which is listed here, has been rescheduled to enable appropriate training for new directors and support staff, and the incorporation of regional mutual aid agreements. One of the things that is very much part of our initiative and strategy is to be part of regional initiatives and regional cooperation and partnerships, and so that's very much part of how we are moving forward in our planning. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Council Green?
You know, I can't recall, but thank you very much. Are council members eligible for that kind of training? For instance, the tabletop exercise?
There is a initiative to train council members. You are part of what they call the policy group, and so there is an initiative to do that training. And we've been holding off on that just because you've had a lot on the go and a lot of pieces, and so when it is appropriate, we will make that available to you.
Thank you.
We'll just have to see till midnight one of these nights to get it all in here. Thank you, and thank you very much. I have to say, one of the really nice things about this, while this is getting late and pieces, it's actually very nice just to get an update on some of the things that are going on. Like, we don't actually take the time to look, so the progress report is actually really, really worthwhile for us, just to have us, to see what's going on, so thank you for this. All right, Building and Planning, I believe we have Mr. Anderson here to talk to this.
Thank you. Yes, we are continuing along. As part of that housing framework I mentioned earlier, we have a couple of initiatives that are underway. The first I'd like to speak to is the secondary suite study, and this study had been initiated some time ago, but it is one that we continue to work on, and it involves a review of issues and options, and preparation of basically a policy and regulatory framework for secondary suites in Oak Bay. Study looks at challenges and issues around implementing a regulatory framework for both existing suites without permits and for new suites. Where we're at in the, in the progress on this study is basically we're in Phase Three, developing policy options and regulatory framework. We have conducted background research and issues research and public engagement, as we held open house previously regarding this study. So the consultants are basically finalizing the draft around the policy options and regulatory framework. That is a study that will be connected to and tied into the next initiative, which is the Housing Needs Report. And that, that report has been initiated as well, and where we're looking at information on supply and demand of housing in Oak Bay, and for a range of housing options across housing continuum. And we're going to look at the amount and type of housing that would be needed in Oak Bay, and an understanding of the needs and gaps associated with those housing types. We've completed background research and analysis with our consultants on that report, and we're currently involved in stakeholder engagement, and have actually just conducted our focus groups with stakeholder organizations today, as a matter of fact. The third item on the list is the Sea Level Rise Study. We're participating in this study with the Capital Regional District, and that's been completed through the Capital Region District with consultants, and looking at coastal flood and tsunami inundation mapping. We're also going to be establishing flood construction levels for municipalities in the region, which will be very helpful for us, and that's anticipated, that study to be completed in 2020. The next two initiatives I'll speak to, we've completed, and council has, you may recall, May 13th adopted a community amenity contribution policy. That was one of our initiatives that we had underway. The next item is implementing the Building Energy Step Code, and we've, we've put that in place, and we're looking forward to the next steps, two and three, being implemented in the coming year 2020. The final item on our strategic initiative list is the process to amend the official community plan to bring a heritage conservation area into place for the prospect area. And as council may be aware, we're working on the OCP Amendment Bylaw and package associated with that, and currently looking at the schedule list of protected properties as part of that initiative. And we intend to bring that forward for council and hope to see that completed this year. So with that, Your Worship, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, because we do so much with land use. I'm sure there's a few questions here. Counselor Nae?
Through you, Mayor, to Chair, to staff. Mr. Anderson, I just have some question around the timeline of the secondary suite and the Housing Needs Report. In the strat plan, it's got the dates, the timing of the secondary suite to be completed in the first quarter of 2020, and then it speaks to that being presented to council once the Housing Needs Report is done, but I was not clear about when the Housing Needs Report is completed. I'm reading in the fourth quarter, is that of 2020, which would then mean that the secondary suite report would be presented? No? Okay, we are giving some, okay.
Mr. Anderson?
Perhaps I can clarify. The Housing Needs Report is intended to be completed fourth quarter of this year, and we'd held off moving forward on the secondary suite study until we had the Housing Needs Report in place, and we knew what direction we were seeing from that. And then we were going to be moving and completing the secondary suite study and bringing that forward, and that was a direction from council to ensure we had those sequenced correctly.
Okay, so fourth quarter means 2019 of the Housing Needs Report.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Oh, gosh. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any other questions? Well, there you go. Thank you very much for that. Engineering.
So the, the first group of, the first five of those initiatives on there are upgrades to Municipal Hall, and they fall under Engineering Services just because there isn't a particular director or department that deals with facility upgrades for this building. That's a great example of a couple of things. One, of projects that are funded for and planned to take more than a year to complete, and so there's a lot of that work that's been done so far this year, but the plan is to carry on into the new year. It's also an example of a project, or a group of projects, program, I guess you could call it, that required a project manager to take the work on and to manage from cradle to grave for these ones, so, because it's beyond our normal capacity within staff to handle this kind of level of effort. So the Municipal Hall heating system is one that wasn't finished when we put the slides together, but is now, so that's good. Pinning Municipal Hall, again, great progress, but more to be done in the new year. Same with the carpets. Fire alarm is complete, and of course, main door to happen in the new year. Number six, so now ones that kind of fall into Engineering Services, just a great example of a relatively straightforward decision, but a commitment that you've made, that the council has decided to make, to support watershed in terms of the Baker Creek and the cathedral approach to that, to that watershed going forward. Next, which we talked about last week in terms of contract awards, is LED streetlight project in terms of finishing that project. We'll go to next slide, please. Another straightforward one, but really important for longer-term, making Public Works and Engineering Services more efficient at managing our work, is just creating some infrastructure down in Public Works to handle, to allow foremen and leaders, supervisors to plan and track the work that we do. Next is increased transportation safety projects, and this is a good example of, in the strategic planning thought process of where the funding is in the five-year plan increases gradually over the next few years, so that we go from approximately $200,000 per year to 500 by 2022, and it's really just expanding the capability, expanding how much this, the district can deliver in terms of increasing transportation safety-related things in the district, like crosswalks, intersection upgrades, bike lanes, et cetera. Number 10 is the Grow Infrastructure Reserve Savings Program. Again, one that was a multi-year plan around dealing with the future and the requirement in the future to do a lot more infrastructure work than has been happening in the, in the recent past. So this is connected to the long-term financial planning project and the finance side, and is definitely a multi-year program. Number 11 is around achieving sustainable service delivery around payment management, so gradually increasing the funding for payment per year. Number 12, same idea, we have a minimum sustainable service level in terms of how much storm sewer rehabilitation needs to happen, and so this five-year plan and this initiative is around increasing the funding to achieve those levels. Number 13 is just an example of progress where we've been able to complete a water master plan. That was part of the strategic discussions, and so now we have better information about the types of projects and where to go next in terms of priorities for the water system in the future. Number 14 is, is a new thing, and it's very similar to what I talked about in the previous presentation, which was when we did the strategic planning discussions in the spring, we were really just focused on the budget for 2019, so now the same thought process for storm sewer rehabilitation needs to be incorporated into our five-year planning, into our thoughts for the future around water and sanitary sewer. Next slide. I think there's more. Is that it? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. Counselor Green? Don't smile too much, there's questions for you too.
Actually, Mr. Haran, I was just going to say, I wish you'd find another metaphor rather than cradle to grave, that, especially the grave part, that, that's kind of, just kidding.
We'll do it, toilet to ocean? What's the?
It's a very standard lifecycle management term, so I will find something different, though.
I know, I know it is, but it'd be really, you know, something a little more cherry than.
Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to staff. Could we just receive sort of the very brief sort of outline of the contents of the Water Master Plan? Just sort of like the 20-second contents brief, please?
Through Chair, one of the things that I need to do in terms of, is bring more information about what we've learned back to you, to the community and to the council. So it is part of my plan to come back with a similar committee of the whole and actually talk about what we learned about that. So some of those projects include, there's areas in the district that, pressure-wise, in terms of pressure zone, they don't meet the standards, so like in terms of what we'd like to do going forward. So it's about changing perhaps some of the pump stations. It's about making recommendations on connections to perhaps Sanich or Victoria, so that we don't have a single point of failure at, in terms of water supply to the district. And it's around a whole long list of upgrades that, in terms of if we have a six-inch water main, it needs to be a larger diameter to handle the growth going forward and to the, and the needs. But I think that it's a much longer answer, and my intention is to come back with, with more on that coming this year.
Counselor Appleton, was that what you were asking?
Yeah, absolutely. It just fits with my larger interest in allowing, not that everybody else isn't doing important stuff in the background as well, but just the significance of some of these engineering projects, which happen completely invisibly to the public, but there's great work being done, so I appreciate Mr. Haran's comments about putting that into a format that we can really share with the public and really hope to, to show that success.
Thank you, Counselor Braithwaite. Did you have a, no, anybody else? I can't let you off the hook that easily, I just got one. Just a curious, curiosity question on the sewer and storm drain upgrades that are going on. Are those shifting with time with, I know the CRD has some costing applications based on I&amp;I or stats and things, are those driving some of the prioritization of some of the work that's being done right now?
That's a good question, Chair. The, right now, we're in the stage where the, that Oak Bay, even in the last few years, we've expanded how much capital work we're doing in terms of the funding, but also in terms of how quickly we move to do the work through the year. So, but we're limited in terms of, in terms of how much we're able to get done with the, with the department we currently have. In addition to that, we've done the trenches rehabilitation, which we've contracted out. I guess this is, I'm taking a longer and harder way to answer this question. The short answer is, we factor in I&amp;I, inflow and infiltration, extra water in the sanitary sewer is a big driver to our prioritization, so there's that, and then structural assessments. So our last few years, since 2015, we've been doing the closed-circuit television and condition assessment of the storm and sanitary sewers, and so the results of those, it provides us a long list of, of potential projects, and we'd essentially every year do a risk assessment to decide our priorities, where we should focus.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry, didn't mean to take up too much time on that. Moving on. We have Park Recreation and Culture. You started the meeting, and you're coming in towards the end again.
Yeah, I was told by the CIO that I'd be going last, but that I would have an hour.
You may be here for an hour, but we won't be.
I had a really big finish planned, but given the concerns that have been expressed, I'll adjust, and if the next 17 seconds leaves you wanting, it's the thought that counts, right? So. The Walbrand Park railing project. I'll adjust. And if the next 17 seconds leaves you wanting, it's the thought that counts, right? So. The Walbrand Park railing project, that work has been awarded to a contractor and expect that to be done by the date noted at the end of November, if not before. And I believe should be significantly under budget as well. We couldn't, we had to wait until the dry weather was completed, which seems like kind of a funny comment right now, but just so that we didn't ignite a fire. The Sports View Lounge carpet has been replaced, quite similar to the carpet that you see here, and it looks really good. We're getting good comments on it. The Windsor Park Picnic Shelter, construction is underway. If anybody's been there in the last day or two, the posts are up. That should be completed in early November. The Anderson Hill Park kiosk panel content has been sent out to external agencies for summer view, local First Nations and the Vancouver Island Trail folks, just for their feedback. So we're a little bit, the timeline is a little bit out of our control right now, but we certainly will want to hear back from them and hopeful that we'll complete it by November 30th. The one guard shifts, that is kind of an operational item that I'm not sure you'll see that again in future on here on this list. But as council may be aware, that's been a multi-year effort for a few years, and and will continue for a few years to ensure that we don't have any more shifts in the pool where there's only one lifeguard on the deck. But the the money that was in the budget for this year has been used for that purpose. So that's really complete. And the implementation of the urban forest strategy, again, is somewhat operational. The one item I would note is that the draft of the tree protection bylaw was forwarded for legal review yesterday. So depending on when we get that back and how much work there is to do based on the recommendations that we see, we're hopeful that that would be ready to come possibly to the November 18th committee of the whole. If not, then the one immediately thereafter.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Any questions, Mr. Herman? Thank you very much. Sorry, we didn't give you your hour. Back to Ms. B. Welcome back.
Thank you. I I know there's an eagerness to see this wrapped up, so I'll I'll be brief through these last few slides. So the update that you've just received from from each of the departments represents the work that's been done on the previously identified new initiatives. As I mentioned, the the future new initiatives remains kind of a rolling thing and and will never be completely done because you will continue to identify new priorities for us. And and those new priorities will be informed by the OCP, by the kinds of community meetings that you'll be having tomorrow night, as well as other council direction and discussions you have through the through the funding process. So those will become future new initiatives, and those future new initiatives will become future content in the corporate plan. And that will continue on with our service planning cycle of aspiring, aligning, acting, achieving, and adjusting. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you, your worship.
Very well done. And I do want to invite any members of the public, member, if okay, okay. Luckily, it's not a large crowd to just stampede to the front here. Okay, not seeing any coming forward. I will bring it back to this table. I would make one observation, and this is just a general piece. I I think there is, A, just really appreciate that the progress report is laid out here. I I'm a big fan of sort of Gantt chart-type models or things. So, you know, if there was a a clear indication of how long that was, so at a glance, you could kind of see when when in the four-year cycle it was intended to end and where where we were on that that thing. I would, there's some graphic there perhaps, but that's a, it's a suggestion for possible future changes. Is there any other feedback that anybody else, Counselor Green?
Yes, through you. I just want to thank everybody very much for being here tonight and for providing all this terrific information. And remember, the end is never really the end.
There we go. Cradle to grave.
Ignore that.
All right, I'll finish. I was just reminding people there is a public thing. Oh, Counselor Patterson. Oh, please, Counselor Patterson.
Are you sure?
Yeah, we have sixteen and a half minutes left.
I I just, I also want to say thank you very much for all of this information. I like the mayor like charts, so he's already covered that. But sometimes I think that it's also important to just takeaways of perhaps things that you don't see. And so my takeaways after the presentation, certainly one was identified, council and staff need to work together on establishing performance indicators for for future. We were rushed last fall and and in the spring and didn't really deal with that. And out of this, just I realized that we need to improve awareness of workload and rebalancing priorities, finding ways to identify that, and also identifying alternative options for managing with limited resources. So that was my takeaway from it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brithwaite.
I'm wondering if we need to move receipt of both of those reports?
Yeah, we need motions to motions to receive.
So is that okay to do now?
Ms. Hopkins, did you did you wish to?
Your worship, we have a recommendation for the corporate plan that council receive the 2019-2022 corporate plan and authorize staff to update as necessary following council budget decisions so as to keep the document current.
I would like to make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed? And on item number six, the progress report?
Yes, and we also had a a recommendation that council receive and accept the strategic initiatives progress report.
Make that motion.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed? Thank you very much.
Move adjournments.
Moved and seconded. And I just want to point out, there's two more meetings. There's a public meeting on tomorrow night, and there's a special committee of the whole to talk about committees and commissions on Thursday. So with that, all those in favor, opposed, non-opposed? Thank you very much. And thank you very much, staff. This is a very long night for you to come and help us with all of this. So, thank you.